We do have all councilmen in attendance and we can conduct business. Let the record also show that Tammy Clark Gray is also in attendance. And this is Tuesday, September twelfth at exactly two P M. So the first item on our little work session agenda is to talk about the bond schedule. So I sent the bond schedule out to everybody. Jim wants us to make some changes and there was some questions and different things that came back. So if we can kind of quickly go through that and then after that, I'm gonna ask Chairman Dave to come up and talk to us a little bit about rates and the loan repayment and because there was also questions on the resolution that we've got. So on the bond schedule. Can you, I'm sorry Mayor, can you remind me, when did you send that out? I was trying to pull it up. The changes.
You know.
And I now. I was, I think it was last week. But if you can't find it, I can.
No, I think I have it.
Okay. So there were three changes that Jim had asked us to take a serious look at. One of them was ninety-two point oh three discharge of fireworks. We have it now, a first offense of three hundred dollars or a hundred. He wanted to increase it to three and then he wanted to increase the second offense to five hundred instead of a court appearance. And I think there was some conversation specifically about this one. And Kirsten, you had some questions on how you wanted to, your thoughts on that?
I think I was just asking on the fireworks one, like if we could do the maximum amount. I'm just concerned that it's, I mean, it's pretty dangerous for us to have a fire up here. So I think taking it seriously, doing some type of maximum amount isn't a bad idea on that one. I thought we were too, but.
Yeah, so that.
I don't think we talked to him about it.
I mean, these are, we didn't talk about it. So these are his recommendations are in blue. So you're thinking go straight to seven fifty?
Yeah, I just feel like there's no reason for.
Yeah, I don't have it.
I don't have it either, I don't think. It's not what I thought I was pulling up, so.
Okay, hold please.
Sorry. Sorry Mayor.
That's okay.
Let me send it back on to you. I'm sure that as soon as you send it again, I will find it, but I just don't seem to have it.
I don't hear.
Hmm, okay.
Did you send it?
Yeah, I just sent it, yeah. So, um, so we, I mean, I don't, I don't really care. I mean, even if it's on the bond schedule, they can still, you know, they have the option of paying the fee or they can go to court, so.
Sure.
The bond or go to court, so. So seven fifty and then court appearance on the others. So we wouldn't change those because that's still gonna go to court. So that was the first one, that's on ninety-two point zero three. Um, that's good, yeah.
I feel like that gives the like Airbnb people leverage too, to like say
Mm-hmm.
The first of, or an offense of like discharging fireworks is seven hundred and fifty dollars. That usually makes people blink, people like go and do something like that, let's say.
So this shows this one from seven fifty up to a hundred.
You hope.
Nope, not sporting that. I, what is the recommend, why is that?
No, it's at a hundred now.
No, it's at seven. It's at seven fifty. It's at seven fifty now for the short term rental without a permit. Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm still on the fireworks.
Oh, sorry. And then the recreational.
I skipped ahead.
Absolutely, whoa, okay.
Okay, okay.
The recreational fires on your knees, is that, um, like in a fire pit that's covered is the idea, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So is the.
Well, that's an uncovered fire pit.
Yeah, is that the idea that it's uncovered so that's.
No, it's an open fire.
Okay, just an open, like a bunch of fire.
It would be, so, yeah, recreational fireworks, yeah.
This is a fire pit. So what's a recreational fire?
And we have various, we don't have very many of those fences, so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I don't know, and the same with the open fires?
Mm-hmm. So go, I'm sorry, go back to the fireworks then. So these are Jim's recommendations or your finds and is there any, like,
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, he's recommending increasing from a hundred up to three hundred, but
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Why not like five hundred and seven fifty and then court or five hundred and stick with the court appearance for a second offense?
Oh, I thought it was about seven fifty starting.
Yeah, I think just.
First, first offense is seven fifty, then next one's court appearance.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But we go seven fifty, seven fifty and then court appearance, but it'd be, it's gotta, it's gotta be.
We just had a lot of complaints about that this summer and.
Yeah, we've had some challenges this year with them.
First, the people, the people that do shoot them off, you know, they said, fine, I'll pay the fine and I'll go shoot them anyway, so.
Yeah, we did have one.
Well, for a hundred dollars, yeah, a hundred bucks, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not a big deal, spend more.
So that's why for that and fireworks.
Yeah, so, um, so, okay, seven fifty and court?
Yeah, seriously. I thi, I mean, I think that might be more of a deterrent. Yeah, so I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and then the next one is operating a short term rental without a permit. You wanna leave it at seven, you wanna leave that alone?
Yes, I do.
Definitely. That was his first karma. Ruth's not gonna like this.
Yes. What was his reasoning for lowering it? Do you know?
Yeah. Uh, I do not.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then the last one was failure to post a building permit. Uh, right now it's only fifty dollars. He wants to raise that to a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, if he wants to raise it more, I'm fine with that, but, because I just noticed him having to get out of his car a lot a couple of weeks ago when I was with him and.
Yeah, that's okay, that's his job.
I mean, if they're not, oh, yeah, no, I know, but I mean, he could also be doing other part of his job instead of.
Yeah, building permits or, yeah.
Yeah, so if it's posted.
So one fifty oh nineteen is there to get one is a hundred dollars, but if you don't post it, it's a hundred dollars.
No.
They're two separate.
Those are separate, yeah, yeah. So failure to post a building permit is a hundred dollars for right now.
If it's failure to post is a hundred, why is failure to obtain one the same amount?
I know, just look at that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, that should probably be more, correct?
I would say so.
That would be logical.
So what would you think? I'm gonna have a tough time getting a hundred out of it. Uh, double that?
Yeah.
I could live with that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, second offense?
Since you doubled it, double it, I'm gonna give four hundred, turn it to four hundred.
Okay. Okay. I think, I mean, it's not that tough to get a permit. We're just basically telling everyone, come in and apply for a permit.
Yeah, it's not like you're denying them more, you know?
Yeah.
Um, then the failure to notify the town when inspections are required, is that an, do we have an issue with that a lot?
I don't know that I've ever known of him writing a citation for that.
No, we don't at all. I'm not even sure why that's in the bond schedule.
Okay.
It's probably a good question.
But, um, no, we don't, so I wouldn't worry about that.
Okay.
I mean, they can't get a C F O without it, so they, so they have to do that.
And they're kind of at the mercy of the inspectors as well, so.
Yeah. And I just keep in mind on this bond schedule, this is not, this is just abbreviated. If you look, you have to actually go look at like one fifty point zero one nine C to see what the entire ordinance says, so it makes more sense.
Okay.
But, um.
Excuse me, do you have a listing of what all projects need a permit listed on the website? Like a lot of people didn't realize they needed to get a roofing permit?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I don't, it doesn't really do what we're talking about, but we should have one.
As far as I know, yeah.
Just a list of what all projects need to have a permit?
It's in the ordinance too.
Yeah, as far as I know, yes.
Yeah, it's, 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 I'm not sure there's a list on the website, but the, the ordinance is talking, we've talked about changing some of those.
I know, but a lot of people don't read the ordinance, but if you have just a list, this needs a permit, this, 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 this.
No.
Yeah, it's, I think it's always been on the website.
Okay, let's finish the bond schedule. So we're good on this bond schedule?
Um, we were gonna also for the short term rental, keep the court appearance for the second offense, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we won't mess with that one.
All right, appreciate it.
So we'll get those changes out.
That's good.
Yeah, no change, all right. Okay, that's it, that was easy. So the next thing is the water rates and loan repayment and maybe ask Dave to kind of walk us through this, this whole thing. We had questions about the resolution and questions about the rates and, so I think it's a good time for a little probably education portion. So Dave, are you okay?
Sure.
Coming up here, you don't really have a scooting chair, but.
That's all right, as long as I can play, I'll be fine. All right, what do we gotta do, Kirsten? Okay, cool. So yeah, a couple of people asked me to take a look at some recent developments with regard to the water loan payment reserve that Boyd brought forward and got discussed over the last few days. And so I just got my head around that starting yesterday and I gave you all my perspective on where we're at with that and what we should do. And then also with regard to the water rate setting process, I haven't been involved in the nascent effort that started last month, I guess, August, I think it was. And I was gonna be, but then it wasn't for a variety of reasons. And so I have put a little bit of thought into, you know, what we could or should do with regard to rate setting as a town, and I wanted to share those thoughts with you. Just to get you guys started to think about how much of the apple y'all wanna bite with regard to rate setting. There's small mountains of rate setting and there's giant mountain efforts of rate setting. And I've, I've seen some of it in my life where I was an auditor and consultant to the biggest water company in the country, for example, SoCal Water. I worked there for about three years as a consultant. And so I, I'm not an expert, this was thirty years ago, but I did get some exposure to the concepts of rate setting and how it works. I also did the same thing at SoCal Edison, which is the third largest electric utility in the country in terms of gas and electric. So for better or worse, I have a little bit of knowledge, which is probably enough to be dangerous, but at least enough to help us think about conceptually, how do we wanna think about setting rates? What effort, do what, when, where? So I wanted to just share some thoughts on that before y'all get too far down the track on how to do it. I thought I'd just weigh in with a little bit of my perspective on it. So first, with regard to the loan payment reserve, I have found from talking to a few people in the room here mostly about this topic that there might need to be a ground setting on what it is and what it isn't. So there's a couple of basics here that some of the folks in the room will know as well as I do, and other folks, it might be a little bit of, oh, I didn't know it worked like that. So let's just run through the basics of this. How, how does this thing work? So the first thing is it's set up to be a repository on our balance sheet to get in the monies that are collected from the water repayers to repay the loans. And it holds those monies and then sends them out when the, when the loans are paid. It's pretty simple, well intended. And it has an inherent problem and the council has known this forever and they dealt with it appropriately at the time. It has a timing problem. If you're gonna collect fees from users for water at twenty-five dollars a month, I think we do right now, it takes a full year to get today around six hundred thousand dollars out of that. The problem is all of our loans are due in the first few months of the fiscal year. So we pay six hundred thousand dollars in loans out in August, September, July, August, September, October, basically. So the money goes out the door, but then the money comes in the door slower. So you have to end up with a cushion on the balance sheet and the town's always known that. And so way early on, before loan payments really even started in large amounts, the town funded this reserve with extra money. Not just what was coming in from the ratepayers, but a bigger amount. Back then they did twenty-eight thousand a month, way back then, and forty-three thousand a month in a couple of months. Just to build up that cushion so that it wouldn't run out of cash in December after all the payments while waiting for the next six months of ratepayers money. Does that make sense to everybody? That worked real well and that was what happened, oh, until about two thousand twenty-one. Okay, what happened in two thousand twenty-one? I wasn't there. Some people who are in the room, so they can chime in if necessary, but I think their Reader's Digest version is uh, people looked at it and said, oh gosh, we've put a lot in here, it isn't too much. So let's cut it back a little bit and just start putting thirteen thousand a month in. And that's what we did. I don't think there was clarity or unanimity on how long we should go with this reduced rate of thirteen thousand a month. But in fact, what's happened is the town has put thirteen thousand a month in for the metered ratepayers only. Since, I think it was May, I have it somewhere in detail, I think it was around May of two thousand twenty-one. And so for the last twenty-seven months until this was caught, we'd been underfunding the, uh, the water, uh, the loan reserve for the portion that was owed by the metered ratepayers. We've always been putting in the right amount for the S A F fees, the non-meter accounts. A rough math of what should have been going in over that period of time, it varies because the fee has varied over those three years, was around twenty-six thousand dollars a month. So instead of twenty-six, we were putting in thirteen.
So can I stop and ask you a question?
Sure.
So we collect in the meter, S A F, twenty-five bucks a month.
Yep.
And in the, uh, other accounts, we collect twenty-six, twenty-five, about to say we're twenty-seven, I forget where we're practicing. So if you take twenty-five and then average it twenty-five, twice six, multiply that times
Two thousand.
Forty-eight users, we should be putting in fifteen thousand. So like, you know.
So this thirteen is only for the metered lots. There was about another, it varied, but it was eight, let's call it eighteen from the other side. So we were putting in around thirty-something.
Even though we were collecting twenty-five a month, we weren't putting in half of that or?
Well, I, I don't wanna speak about the.
I mean, per, per lot, I'm sure, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's about half is what I'm saying there. So we should have probably been putting in, in aggregate for the metered lots, around twenty-six thousand. We were putting in about thirteen. In rough numbers, it was about half. Now, that was fine for some period of time, because I think we had overfunded to begin with back before two thousand twenty-one. I don't think it was intended to stay at that level for as long as it did, and it did. And so as a consequence, uh, I'll show you in a second, the cushion has been used up. In fact, as we exit August, when we finalize the August accounting, there's like forty-one dollars in the reserve. It gets worse. So because, here's, here's a roll forward. This is just literally beginning balance plus what we add in minus the actual loan payments made in that month and then the ending balance. And you can kind of see on this page the fundamental problem, right? In the additions column, as Ron just said, it should be around fifty grand a month. Fifty grand a month comes in all twelve months, but all the six hundred thousand loan payments go out in the first, what is it, the first five, I guess? July through November. And so sure enough, if, if we don't do anything differently as we sit here today, this account on our balance sheet will go negative. Um, if we could do that, it would go negative to a hundred and, what is that, a hundred and eight thousand dollars in October. Um, and then, you know, it would catch up again, but then next year it would go down again as well and hit negative numbers. So obviously, I think, I think it was Boyd who figured this out, by the way, so I have to say thank you for doing that, for catching that, because it did not get caught by me or anyone else, I think, sitting here. So, uh, you know, the money was, if we didn't put it into this account, that just means it was sitting on the balance sheet somewhere else. It was sitting in the savings account. So we didn't fund it into this reserve, but it sat in the savings account. Unaware of this particular problem, you know, the council moved money out of savings into an encumbered just, uh, reserve, the system reserve recently in the capital equipment reserve, which were good moves at the time, but unfortunately had not been aware of this, we would have put the money there. So I think that's, that's what Boyd brought forward and that's frankly my, my take. That's, that's where we're at, guys. So people have asked, I'm just gonna share a little bit of other kind of additional math here and things to think about. So how much should we move, right? We know how much we overfunded, but we also said it was probably overfunded a little at the beginning, so I did some, some extra math here to try and figure out what, um, what we could put in. And basically, the reserve, if you roll this thing forward and do nothing different, if you go out to October of next year, it's negative two twenty-five. And why does it get worse, you might ask? It's getting worse because at the moment, as we sit here, we are telling ourselves we're only gonna continue to collect twenty-five dollars for every water user. And in fact, I'll show you on the slide, it needs to be higher than that. And I think Boyd's created the same math as well over the time. Um, and so that's why it's actually getting worse, because even if we go to the twenty-five, we're still undercollecting to pay, to fully fund the loans. And I'll show you that in a sec.
So, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, so we, if we're transferring money and doing that, what are we doing next year? Are we doing this, having to do the same thing or is this to cover?
That's where he's going.
That's a great question. We have two issues here in my mind. One is, we've been doing this unintentionally low funding for two years. We gotta fix that.
Next, okay.
And we're gonna fix that with a resolution is my proposal, everybody else's proposal, I think. And so your question is the better one. Well, okay, that's great, we fixed yesterday. What about tomorrow? And I, I do wanna talk at length about tomorrow, um, as to where we are in terms of are we continuing to create that problem by underfunding? The answer is yes. And so I do believe we should do something about that and I'll show you that in a second. So another way of looking at it is I went back and did the detailed math and looked at to Ron's question, what should we have been putting in? You asked me this morning, I think it was. And, and what, what did we put in with the thirteen thousand? It's, I get three hundred and seventy-three thousand. I think Boyd might have got a slightly different number. In any event, Boyd recommended we move three twenty. That's a perfectly reasonable number to me. It will cover the shortages and then some for the next period of time and get this account back to health to be able to fully fund the, the annual amounts. But to Kirsten's, Kirsten's point, it, um, it only solved yesterday. So we would still have the same problem in a couple of years if we keep only collecting twenty-five bucks. We're gonna talk about the need to, to up that in a sec. Any questions or comments there?
Yeah, I wanna make sure I understand this. We weren't underfunding and that we cut from twenty-five, twenty-six dollars to thirteen because we were overfunding.
Prior to April twenty-one, we, prior to April of twenty-one, we may have overfunded a little bit.
Overfunding the reserve.
And so I can't really speak to why we cut to thirteen. Boyd can, sounds like, yeah.
If you want me to add, um, this was a time when, I, I, I don't remember all the circumstances that brought it up to this point, but yes, we had the collection of the payments were running smoothly, increasing on a month, I mean, on a annual basis. But the taking of the funds that were collected and placing them in this account specifically for this amount at one time was, it was too much work to put it in there and take it out, so the money was just left in petty cash. And they would spend it as they needed it and when it wasn't being spent, it was put in there. We were trying to get out of that problem and get it to where it was a monthly activity and we did some analysis. Susan said, we, and Chris, help me with this. We, we set up and we said thirteen hundred dollars is all we need to put in here for the next X months. And it was like seven or eight months is all we needed to do. However, due to lack of communication, and it's in this room, including me, when we upped the rates the next, uh, annual cycle, we never went back officially and said, by the way, you know, that thirteen was for seven months, we now need the fifty or whatever it was at that time to continue on. And that's where we, that's how we came up with this shortfall is through that process. Now, I don't know if I addressed all the questions you'd asked me, but.
Okay, so that.
But that's where we, that's how we got there. So the money being collected from our users has been going into, I'll say, the water utility fund, which isn't anything exists. On an, on a, on a even basis, which it should have, it was meeting the, the expectation of the expenses and the payments. The only thing you've left out on this is there's a discussion about being overcharging more than we should charge. And that I totally disagree with because there's only one thing that's not in this analysis. I hope it's in the later one. And that is, we started eons ago saying we wanted to have a even, every annual raise as increased, as consistent as you possibly can. Any book you read on rates will say consistent periodic increases are the best way to go. And so to do that, you've gotta collect a little extra when you're behind so that you plan ahead. And if you look at this, what you've done so far, totally agree. I mean, we're not gonna argue for pennies in this, in this meeting for no sake. But you gotta understand, we got a, a, a payment coming up, an additional payment coming up. We had a hundred and fifty dollar, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar one this year and we're gonna ninety-five thousand one next year. If you add those two together, we've increased, if you, if you divide that by the rates, we should have had a huge rate increase. But if we have this, if they have this extra reserve in that reserve, we can keep going at the two dollars and when we get out here in space, one day we will actually meet. And then one other thing for Ron's deal is when we started out with the rates, the, the meter customers were you, were paying for everything, then we added that, the deal, and you couldn't add that mu, or nobody wanted to add that. Didn't have the courage to say start there. So we've been going like this at two dollars a year for the S A F vacant lots and one dollar a year effective for just the payment portion. And this year, if you raise it two dollars and one dollar, we would have a rate that is consistent. Everybody in this town would be paying the same amount towards the loans.
Yeah, perfect.
Um, let me ask, let me ask my question in a different way.
Yeah, I'm not sure we answered it.
If the town had not changed how they funded the reserve to pay the loans back, would we have been funded sufficiently to pay the loans currently?
I know the question you asked and I'll answer it as easy, as concisely as I can. The town collected the right amount of money from the water users and put it into the town's bank accounts. What the town didn't do was move what some would argue is the right amount into this one bank account. So it's there, the money's there. There's no, we didn't collect enough, we should have gotten more. That's not the case. We got the right amount from the water users all along. We were, as Boyd said, we were billing them twenty-three dollars for the S A F, then twenty-five, whatever it's been. Those monies came into the town, they went into the town's bank accounts, we have several bank accounts, they went into the general bank account. And what we should have been doing every month was moving some of it into this account, just because we chose to use this bookkeeping arrangement, which is optional. But we chose to use this bookkeeping eng- engagement. And when I first saw it, eighteen months ago, when I first engaged with town, I said, oh, that's gonna be complicated. Little did I know, and the reason I said that, I was like, ah, we probably won't do that right, we'll probably make a mess of it, and sure enough, we did. So, you know, this kind of stuff is great in theory. It says, hey, don't just put it in the general account, move it over here so we can keep track of it more accurately. That's a good idea. It just, you have to have a bigger accounting department to make sure you never foot fault on that and make a mistake. And so what we're talking about here is not, do we have enough money? Did we underfund? We didn't, we just have it in the wrong account. And that's why the fix.
And I agree.
The fix is just to move it from one account to this account. The money's there.
So we, we were fine, except that we made, for lack of a better word, a kind of an accounting error.
We didn't make an accounting error, we should have to move it from one account to another. That's it.
That's why we took the excess in checking, forget about this thing.
Right, I remember that.
Put all that into the.
System reserve.
And so that fund that we put it in, that's an encumbered fund?
Yeah, that's all.
So you can't easily, you can't.
Well, what this resolution will be.
The resolution does.
Yeah, the resolution.
It's town council direction, so they're gonna do the resolution.
Right. That's what I mean by easily move it back.
It's, it's pretty easy, I know who writes this.
And possibly, possibly some of the other reason why we might have looked like we were overfunded is things happen with state funding. We no longer got loans, we went and we got ARPA funding and so where we were funding for a potential project, it turned out that one does not require a loan or does not end up with the loan that we have to pay, so.
So it may not be as bad as it thought it would be in the future.
Yeah, so it wasn't necessarily all because we were overfunded. We were funding for another loan. So what undercurrent, what I'm wanting to understand, so if we return to what we were doing before we changed how we funded that reserve and funded that reserve the way we had been funding it, considering the loans we currently have, we would not, we don't need to, to do anything rate wise to stay solvent just on the loans.
So this is the thing.
I'm not talking about anything else that the water.
I got it. So, so look, this is easy to conflate, okay? And we're all doing it and we, and it's not accurate. It's easy to conflate this loan, this is one of the other reasons I don't like the loan reserve. It's easy to, to fall into the trap of thinking that the loan reserve has anything to do with collecting the right amount of money to pay the loans from the ratepayers. It doesn't. I know that's really hard to get your heads around, but it doesn't. The rates determine how much we collect for the ratepayers and we have always set the rates properly. So we are, I'm gonna say it again, I said it a couple of minutes ago. We are getting the right amount of money to pay the loans from the waterpayers and we always have. It's always every month, we get the right amount of money from the ratepayers themselves. It comes into our checking account and it goes into our town. What didn't happen is literally the accounting department didn't come along behind the scenes and say, oh, we got that money for the loans, I need to move it over to this other savings account. It just literally didn't go to the proper savings account. It's in the town's ownership. It always has been. And so the decision about whether we're getting enough from the ratepayers to pay the loans is actually the really important decision. That's what you're getting at.
That's, yeah.
But that's not this. This is just bookkeeping.
Right, no, I get that. I'm just, so if we returned our bookkeeping to the way we were, to the prior model.
I would tell you, whether we fixed the bookkeeping or not, we're still getting the right amount from the ratepayers to pay the loans. That's the point I'm trying to make.
We're getting the right amount, we're not necessarily putting the right amount in the right place.
Yeah, and it doesn't even really matter, because we still pay the things, but since we decided we were gonna do this.
Right.
My recommendation is, first of all, we gotta fix the thing, let's move to three twenty. But my second recommendation is let's, let's, let's institutionalize the accounting. And let's make sure we do it every month. And I think the accounting department, all of them are hearing right now, that we need to do this. So we're gonna move a hundred percent of the S A F fees as we, all we should have been doing, frankly, always have. And we're gonna move the appropriate portion, which is just math, if the total base fee is sixty-five dollars and the part that goes to the loan repayment reserve is twenty-four or whatever it is. You just do that math and you move that, that portion of the. And you move that, that portion of the base fee. But we used to miss it. It was kind of haphazard. The accounting was everywhere once in a while. We're gonna make sure it's in the accounting process, so we do those two things every month. And then this question won't come up, because the amount of money will be obvious that we have enough, because it'll be sitting in this reserve. Right now, it's not obvious, so the question comes up, hey, do we have enough or not? When we fix the accounting, everyone will be able to see more clearly, oh, yeah, we do have enough.
We tell people that we're, all the SAF and twenty-seven of the base fee reserves, I mean, they should be.
But then it doesn't, they're gonna sit there and say, oh.
You'll see every month there.
But the twenty-seven is correct.
So it's important to do this.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that number out, whatever it is.
Okay, so, so for this purpose, we don't necessarily need to adjust rates going forward.
Not for this purpose, not for this, I don't know about the second part of that sentence. Do we need to adjust rates going forward for other reasons? But for this reason, no.
No, just for this purpose.
This is a retroactive bookkeeping change.
Now, if we take the new loans, that could affect that.
We'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
The, the, the only thing I'd, I'd say that's really positive about having that reserve is I would have never identified the problem until we ran out of money. I mean, it's like anything else. If you put the glass on the wall on a shelf and look at it, you can tell if it's full or not. And if it's in the cupboard, you don't necessarily see it yet. And that's one of the positive things of having that.
In fact, that's gonna lead me to my last recommendation here. So we actually found this twice in my short time helping the town. And this is just part of the maturation of the town, right? We have three administrative people. Kristen is, you know, graciously taken on accounting and looks to eighteen other things. So we're doing the best we can, and we're maturing. This idea of looking ahead, for example, if during the last budget process, I had said, you know what, we should do a roll forward of all the reserves on the books and see if we have enough there for the next year's planned payments, we would have seen this, just like Boyd found it last week or whenever it was, we would have seen it. We don't do that. So we're gonna do that, and that's what the third step says. So I'm gonna add a step to the planning process, which I thought the town put in place. I didn't have it there this year. I'll add it there for next year. We will do that for every reserve. We'll look forward with the road reserve. I'll give you another example. Last year, when we were doing the road reserve, we, this council was on board with doing Brambleberry, and it was three hundred and some thousand was the estimate at the time, I think. And at the last, we had the estimate was six eighty-seven. And we still said, yep, let's do it. But as we sat there, we didn't know if the water, if the road reserve had enough to do that at the higher price tag. We, we kinda did, but we didn't do the math. And I said, guys, we should do that roll forward. I actually brought it to the council the next week and said, guys, here's what it looks like if, if you actually have to spend that much on Brambleberry. And it was, you know, less leftover, but there was still some. Turns out, it's not, not an issue, thank God. Uh, but anyways, we're gonna add that. So it's good, we learned, right? So if you make a mistake, just learn from it. So we're gonna make a couple of changes to accounting. We're gonna make a change to the planning process, so that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. So it's always good news when you find a mistake, because you can do something.
So after yesterday's discussion, we're gonna talk about people not paying their fees. And so the question came up, okay, if we've got an SAF person behind ten, you know, three thousand or whatever, should, should we transfer what we should get, what we expect to get into this, and then let, if, if we're not paying, have the operating fund?
I'll tell you the easy answer for me, no. Because we could never do that. The accounting for that would require three, three Kristens. So we just transfer what we get. They can, the accounting team we have can look in the log box and say, we got, or the report, and say, we got eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for SAF fees. I need to move that amount over here. Getting more esoteric and saying, well, some people didn't pay. Um, and then what happens the next month when they do pay? Do you take less?
I'm just curious if, if not.
And then it also helps manage, from a management standpoint, because if you're not having enough money to put in there, if Kristen's supposed to start putting, I'll just say fifty thousand, and she's only putting forty-five every month, management ought to say, hey, how come you're not putting the fifty? And then she ought to say, because we're not touching our nails. I mean, it's, there's, there's been some, a little tension on some of that.
So Mayor, let's try and put a bow on this. Those are the recommendations I have. I think those are supported by everybody else here, Boyd.
Yeah, and as long as I can see what that number three is, because the model I've been using runs out about eight to nine years, and that should help.
I'd love, I'd love to show it to you when January comes around.
We'll put it in there.
When we get to the budgeting process, I'll take you up on that.
Yeah.
So, uh, you guys are, you guys are up. Hundred percent of the service availability is by ordinance. You have to do that. It isn't like it's discretionary.
Yeah, she does.
And that's never been the problem. The problem was, I was doing twenty-eight thousand every month. And at some point in time, the treasurer at the time said, only need to do thirteen. But the caveat to that was never told to me of only need to do thirteen for four months. So I was never told to stop, go, or go back to the twenty-eight, so. And it's, it's not an issue of not knowing, um, how much of the base fee of the metered ones that I need to transfer every month. That's easily found out now. Um, it's just, from tonight forward, not a problem. It's just need to.
We just need to fix this resolution.
Sorry.
And I ask one more question, Dave. What was your number that you said needed to go into the kitty?
Oh, I, I actually don't really have one. I know what, I could go back and back calculate. If we had done it, it would be about three seventy-three. I, I don't know how you got the three twenty, but I don't, I don't think either of them makes a big difference. I didn't have a strong opinion.
I, I wanna add one thing to this. There's been a lot of discussion about when you're gonna set rates and when you're not gonna set rates. That three twenty was based on rates being set, uh, this January first.
Okay.
So if you're not going to do it, you had to need, you need to add approximately another twenty thousand, at least to my number. I wish you'd done it so you could check my numbers. I mean, this is a one-time chance to make this correction.
Yeah. We can always, I mean, the council can always split the difference and put three fifty in or something if they wanna use a, a round number. I think we're, to, to calculate the actual number, you know, there's different philosophical things. Is it that you wanna go back and recreate what, what literally came in from the ratepayers? We could do that. It would take some effort. I think it's just an estimate. I'm good with anywhere. I'm, I like Boyd's number. I, three seventy-three, I wouldn't do more than that, because that's the most I could come up with. Split the difference, pick a number. It's really your all's decision how you wanna go forward.
And I didn't look back. I just said, what do we need to start right today and be whole for the next eight years?
We're gonna talk about that next.
Okay, okay. Council, where are you at with this?
I just had one question. So the, um, the number three that you're talking about, so it's gonna be an annual thing?
Good question. Could it be more often? Yeah. So it definitely should be part of the planning process. We should do it for the road reserve. So if you all said, hey, we wanna spend, whatever the number is, a million dollars to do Vista, we, I, I should owe you, or the accounting department should owe you. And then Alice says, okay, here's what that means as you look forward. Same with the water reserve, same with this loan payment reserve, which will actually be very easy to do, because we know what the loan payments are. So I think doing it once a year, if I go out two or three years, is, is fine. Uh, if you guys ever wanted to update it, just ask.
So I think.
I think for the resolution, three fifty would be comfortable.
You mean we're not? Three fifty, okay.
Yeah.
I think I had the placeholder of three twenty, because that was the ballpark figure that you'd given me, so.
I like round numbers for this kind of stuff, so.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
And I don't care what the rate current is, if we apologize or, or whatever.
Yeah, I think that we, we, we moved on in used days, I believe.
Yeah.
I'm like, just put it in writing, though, so that when somebody ten years from now goes back and say, what the hell are you guys doing? You got a paper trail for it. You don't have to be humbled, but you need to put down what you did.
That's right. All right, so we're gonna change gears a little bit, and these are not really that related. The accounting givery pokery that we decided to put in place for, uh, how to handle the loan payments is just sort of this check and balance accounting system. That, that's sort of a back office function. The more interesting question that all y'all have been getting to is, what about rates? And I, I don't know that this is the place we make great decisions with this group of people. I don't know where y'all do it, but I do, I did wanna show you some thoughts as you embarked on that process, um, and, and kind of sync it up with what's going on in the water board. And so what I've got here are a couple of things. One is a very high level, very simplified way of thinking about how to set rates for this town. And as I mentioned before, when you go to set rates, you can set rates for Southern California Edison, and you have two hundred people in your rate setting department that work with the regulatory authorities and a whole bunch of consultants like me. And you spend all year, all the time doing rates, or you can do it in a five-person town with three administrative staff people does, which I hope is something way, way, way simpler. So this is on the way, way, way simpler end of the spectrum that I'm gonna propose. And I am gonna take the opportunity to give you my two cents for what it's worth, probably less, uh, on what you should do with rates in the short term. As you start to go into this process, be thinking about, hey, we probably at least have these table stakes of, of rate changes we should be thinking about for you guys to consider what you wanna do with it. Okay, so some of this is theory and some of this is practical for the town. Ask questions, please, so I don't talk for fifteen minutes. All right, my quick thoughts, because people were asking for this over the last twenty-four hours, were what would I do with regard to rates? And I, I would say that some of these are, are strongly held thoughts, and some are just, you know, probably better to do with this way of things. First thing, uh, I do think that the town council is the right group to ultimately approve rates for the town. Can't think of a better group. Uh, and so I do think they should have the ability to do that, and I don't think we should make it hard on them. I think we should make it part of their jobs, and we hold them accountable in ways we hold them accountable. So I'm perfectly happy to see that change to a resolution process, and you don't have to take three months to read it. Uh, and I would not specify the time. I think some years we might wanna do it in January. Something could change in the middle of the year if something broke, and we need to do it in March, or it could be done at the beginning of the fiscal year. I don't think you should constrain yourself with regard to timing, uh, in the ordinance or the resolution itself, obviously. That's just Dave's opinion. Um, I do believe we need to make a two-dollar adjustment. We're gonna come back to this. So if you guys could hold questions about, hey, is it two bucks for zero or a buck or whatever, we're gonna go through that in detail. So, so hold your, your fire on should we raise rates or not? I've seen the plan to raise rates a couple bucks every year, and I've always liked it. I've seen it the first time in one of the spreadsheets that Boyd probably created, and I've thought it's a very sensible plan. I continue to think it's a sensible plan after crunching numbers now for some period of time. And I'll show you why in a minute. So the data to support that will follow. Next year, I, I say next year, we could start whenever, whenever you have a team ready, and we'll talk about that in a minute as well. But we should start a more structured rate review process, and, and my goals for that are several. But I'll tell you one of the most important ones. It's to build a competency in the town of people that can do rate setting. We've had Boyd and some others kind of pick up that ball and run with it over time, and they're probably not gonna be there to run with that ball forever. So I'd like this process to get more than one or two people to commit to it. Could be from this room or from outside this room ideally as well. And let's, let's get six or eight people on this team, and let's get them involved in this. And then, you know, if some of them move out of the area, we'll at least have a couple of people who have flexed these muscles and could do it the next year or the year after that. So that's a big part of what's behind my thinking here, is I wanna not just set rates, I wanna build a process for doing it, Marty.
If that's the recommendation, and that's what the council wants to do, why wouldn't that group be the, the water utility board?
It probably will. We'll get there in a sec. So, in my opinion, I don't make those decisions. Please remember, everything I say is my opinion. I don't make decisions here. Uh, the reserve ordinances, uh, in my opinion, are really poorly written. And I apologize to those in the room that contributed to the writing of the reserve ordinances. But I could read those, and I can have three friends read them, and all four of us would come up with a different interpretation of what they mean. So I do think we need to rewrite them more precisely and use better words. I think that's probably true of everything, right? You can always do better. So I, I think it's worth doing, because it's important, because it impacts all two thousand homeowners in the town. Uh, I do think it's important, as I said before, to adopt a simple and easy-to-use model. The model that I think makes sense for the town, and I use the term layers, to think about the layers of a rate that you set for a rate payer. And you guys, we've already kind of gone down this path. It's not that different than what we do. We have a layer for existing infrastructure costs. It's the loan layer. It's twenty-five bucks right now. We charge another forty for the operations layer, only to the metered accounts, plus two tenths of a cent per gallon or something. And, and then we charge for, uh, and then we, we don't do a very good job with this last one, because it's hard, but we also try to put money away to build future reserves. It's that easy. It's not more complicated than that, in my opinion. Three layers to the, to the thing basically, yes, sir.
Wouldn't there be a fourth layer, and that would be the water usage?
Yeah, it's in operating cost, so reimbursement of operating cost should come through either. You can do it with a fixed fee. We can do the whole thing with a fixed fee, eighty dollars. Or you can do the whole thing as variable, five cents a gallon. Uh, what we've chose to do today is probably ninety percent fixed fee of sixty-five dollars or whatever it is, and a tiny little bit of, of the other one. But those two mechanisms are designed to capture the same cost, which is operating cost.
You know, I'm, I'm used to seeing, you use X amount of water, it's this much per thousand gallons. Above that, to this level, it's X amount, a Y amount, and Z.
So that's a billing mechanism. We're gonna talk about those in a second. This is actually before how you're gonna bill it. This is, what is it that you're trying to collect theoretically? And the buckets here are, in my opinion, things we've already paid for that we need to get the money back. Things we're paying every day to turn the crank and have water come out of your faucet, and things we need to save for, for the future when stuff breaks or needs to be replaced. In my mind, I know this is Pines Sky, and I told you there'd be a few slides of Pines Sky. There are three buckets of costs you need to get reimbursement from the ratepayers from. How you do that? Do we bill by the day, by the year, by the month, by the gallon? Those are rate mechanisms, and we'll talk about those later.
What about reserves?
So the last one was what I meant by reserves. The things you need to save for the future, pay for infrastructure costs, that's the third bullet.
Reserves.
Yep.
Do we need to set a, a maximum amount for the reserves? Because we, we don't have one right now.
We not only don't have a maximum, we sort of set a minimum earlier this year, but more importantly, we need to figure out what we need. And, and then we can set policies and practicalities around how we save for that. Uh, but we'll come to that. That's a great question, and it's most of the work here, frankly.
Before you go on, can I just bring up one alternative to your number one?
Yeah.
Because this, from a, from a legal standpoint, you can do either. You can do an ordinance or you can do a resolution. From a county standpoint, you can do either one. And I, and I, being there, I know how easy resolutions are and how tough ordinance are. But I would like to make sure this group understands why we're unique, not unique. We're in the minority using, uh, uh, ordinances, as far as other towns are concerned. But when this town was formed, the atmosphere of the administrating group up here was really, really bad. Uh, the association was not communicating with anybody. Uh, they were, uh, the chairman of the board would not allow the board members to even see the data. And so when we formed the town, we said, we need to be squeaky clean. And we needed to make sure our users and water and our citizens were fully informed of what we're doing, what we were going to do, what we were doing, and when we were done with it. And an ordinance, I would plead with you from a, from a user standpoint and an experience standpoint, ordinance are tough. You got them doing three months, but you gotta do the work three, you gotta do the work, just do it three months earlier. And then when you do it, the chances of someone seeing an ordinance being read is three times greater than them seeing a resolution. The second thing is, is it forces all of us to do our work a hell of a lot more thorough before we go into an ordinance, because I can't change it overnight. And, and a resolution, and, and we're all human, and we all have this, take the easy route. And if you start getting yourself into a resolution setting, then you have a chance of, hey, well, we'll just do it this way, and we'll fix it next month, or we'll look at it in another three months. That was my only plea, and I, I knew this board didn't have that background. I did, and I wanted to make sure you understood it.
Thank you. And we're, I'm gonna come back to the end with sort of a pitch to the council of some recommendations. These are just my thoughts as we go through. And that's when I'll have a chance to chew on, do we wanna do anything about this, this, and the other thing. We'll come back to that in a minute. The fourth thing on here is more controversial than I would, than the accountant in me would, would expect. But, uh, in my mind, uh, we're undercollecting for the loans today. Again, I'm gonna show you in just a second. And we continue to undercollect, and it actually gets worse, because we have new loans coming up. So, um, we need to get more if we're gonna, if we're gonna follow our policy. And here it is. Let's not put that off any longer. So this is the simplest math that this town will ever have. The one thing that I like the policy we have in place, and it's a super easy policy, and it's not debatable, and it's easy to explain to anyone, is we are gonna collect, I'm just saying what y'all have decided before, since this isn't Dave's thought. We're gonna collect enough from the ratepayers in a fixed fee to cover the loans every year. And that fixed fee is gonna be called an SAF fee for the unmetered lots, and we're gonna collect a similar amount from the, from the metered lots. And it's a great policy, in my opinion, and that's what we've been doing. However, uh, we're getting new loans that are becoming due from past completed work, because they're billed a year after the project's completed. So we had a new loan start in the last twenty, twenty months or so. That was a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year. It's on here somewhere. And we haven't changed rates enough in the last couple of years to, to capture that. Uh, we, we are already a little bit higher than we needed to be, so to this whole rate smoothing thing of doing two dollars a month. We, um, we expected in the models that were created that we would go up another two dollars around now when that hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar loan came. As you can see here, this top of this thing just says, here's the loans. FY twenty-four is the fiscal year we're sitting in the middle of now, two months into. We actually have around two thousand and forty-eight ounces. Actually, a few less, because some lots have been combined. You simply divide the six sixty-seven by the two thousand and forty-eight. That gives you three hundred and twenty-six dollars a month. If you're gonna collect it from every household, that's twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents a month. As we sit here today, we're collecting twenty-five. So we're, we're digging a hole. So we're we're digging a hole already. And that hole's already started. So I believe, I hope I'm not speaking for anyone out of school, I believe that the rate setting people that had done the work before basically said we should be expecting to go to around twenty-seven here coming up pretty soon, I think in January. If you roll the clock forward and look to next fiscal year, which starts in July of twenty-four and goes to June of twenty-five, we have yet another new loan coming on, it's on the, it's the line with ninety-five thousand. That is the first expected full payment of the project that's being wrapped up right now. And, you know, ninety-five thousand dollars a year on two thousand accounts is, somebody good with numbers would tell you it's like forty-seven dollars per per house. Which divided by twelve months is, you know, like four bucks a month, if I'm doing that math right, man, if it was wrong. Seems seems right. And so anyways, we're gonna have the same problem starting in the June fiscal year, sorry, in the July fiscal year a year from now. So that's why my earlier comment was, the accountant in me clearly sees a need for two bucks now and another need for two bucks later. And frankly, that's not any thought, that's been the thought of rate setting, the powers that be for a while, I think.
Well, I just disagree with one thing.
What's that?
And that is that the loan repayment reserve, we have a an abundance of money once this transfer is taken. We have an abundance of money that covers that so that we don't have to have that double raise in one year. And I and that, that's what my model does, is it 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 accounts for the the reserve amount. And so we're not, we're not short.
I understand what you're saying.
We're short on collecting two dol-, uh, we're short on collecting the dollar amount equal to the payment that year.
Yeah.
And we've been collecting in advance a little bit extra, so we have the next three years where we can be taking a little less than what it says and still come up with our two dollars. That's the only argument I have.
I appreciate that and I'll I'll just paraphrase it a little bit to make it perhaps a little simpler. Having a little extra cushion in that reserve gives us the ability to be a bit, to to smooth the rate increases.
To push.
Buys us a little bit of time to smooth the rate increases. If we didn't have that cushion, to Boyd's point, we'd be probably pounding the table for the two bucks right now.
Or four.
Yeah, and so that's true. I think it does give you some flexibility in time. It doesn't give you two years, it probably gives you some amount of time that we could calculate, so you could stagger the increases a little bit. And that's, so that gives you a political tool frankly, is what it gives you.
People are already thinking, imagine two bucks is coming.
Yeah.
They know it's coming. If we put three bucks in there, will they get a big screen? I don't know or not.
I don't think they need it.
They don't need it, so but your your model, we showed this yesterday, is how we don't need it.
I I wanna be careful about using the word need, because at the end of the day here, we're running, I don't wanna overuse important words, but we have fiduciary duty to the water system. And so it isn't about want, need or political tools. It's nice to have those and I'm I'm appreciative that we do have one there to allow you to buy a little political capital by timing, spreading the timing out a little bit if you choose to. That said, this isn't a need issue to me. We have a policy statement that says we wanna get reimbursed for the full amount of the loan payments in a fiscal year. Now, we put some money away years ago to give us the ability to fudge that and do it a few quarters later to Boyd's point. But that still doesn't walk past the technical policy question that we set a policy and we wanna get reimbursed for it. So I just wanna make sure we don't, well, do we need it or not? I don't think it's about need, I don't think setting water rates is about need, I think it's about what's the math tell us? And the math is telling us we need more. Now, we put extra money away so you've bought yourself some political capital to spend by timing the, by delaying the timing of implementing these increases if you choose to. But I believe we should talk about it crisply as the model tells us we should increase it. We don't have to because somebody before me was smart enough to put money in the bank.
And I, you brought up the thought, we all said, I don't think there's any disagreement on how much we should collect.
Yeah.
The only thing we're talking about is whether we whether we collect it.
Yeah.
And that's the only issue you're talking about, do I collect it in July or January or this year or next year? And so I don't, I wanna make sure that Dave understands, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I just disagree with the timing.
I I do think it's a political decision at the end, but I just wanna make sure that we all agree the economic question is pretty crisply answered. It's, this is what the math tells you. If you have the ability to time it more in a more palatable way for the citizens, that's awesome.
Quick question, Dave. If I understood you right, you're proposing a two dollar increase in January and a two dollar increase in July of next year.
At some point next year, yeah. I just think that two and two is is what would would, is what the model suggests you should do.
Two in January and then two in July.
That's that's what I would do, but I don't have a political bone in my body, first of all, but I also don't have a political agenda. And I'm not sensitive to citizen input like y'all, so that's what I would do.
So one question, were we still talking like the last time we had a meeting about delaying when we were gonna increase?
Yeah, but this complicates matters.
Well, but maybe it doesn't if we increase in July and just increase it for the full amount of four dollars or whatever you're suggesting.
Well, yeah, I think we talked about doing rate setting along with budgets.
True.
Yeah. But I don't think we ever discussed what we should do now, because we've already budgeted. In our current budget, we budgeted the two and two.
Two bucks in January.
To take effective January one, so we've already made that commitment. Although we have it in the budget.
So the the bottom line of that is if you don't do it in January, you're talking about twenty-four thousand dollars-ish, right?
Out of this year's budget.
Out of this year's budget.
Yeah, and we created a twenty-four thousand dollar hole in this year's budget, yeah.
So, I mean, where are we with the budget now and is that an issue?
It would probably be okay, that's what I'd take, it's like two months into the year.
But then you're gonna, then you're talking about doing four in July, which possibly, I mean, if if the idea here, and I don't, I know you probably haven't quite gotten to it yet, but,
I mean, the need to do a real comprehensive look at how the rates are done and what are there things that should be done differently in the first part of next year so that when we get to the new budget year, either, you know, you need a two dollar increase, you need a four dollar increase, you need five, whatever it is. But, you know, this is all based on, we're we're getting all of this loan money out of the base fees, right? Am I correct in that, like we're?
Yes. Uh, yes, yes, yeah.
And I know the usage is nothing and it goes into the operating fund, but there's other money, that's not the only money that gets brought in, right? There's, so I'm just, I feel like it needs to be looked at in a really comprehensive fashion.
Well, this is the only money that comes in to pay off loans off. The SAF and the portion of the base.
And a portion of the base.
That's the only money that comes in to pay off the payout to loans.
Does any other money come into the water?
All the maintenance.
Anywhere else?
Maintenance of the system.
I have a pen for that one.
Yeah, top, top floor or top drawer.
You're gonna have to please our time, but we can spend a second on this.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, the answer is yes and no to both things that were brought up. Ru's point is a hundred percent right, but at the same time, the other point is true too. So, the best way to do this is not to can can, to put everything together and have sort of a more from this ball of, where are we collecting money and we can move the parts around. The most correct way for a lot of reasons, because it's more defensible, because it's it's technically correct, it's more fair, is to do this layered approach and and really think about your types of costs and then think about who benefits from them and who and how you collect from them. And to my mind, without getting overly complicated, we have three types of costs. We have existing, infrastructure. We have turning the crank and making water come out of the pump. And we have saved for the future infrastructure. How, so those are kind of the three buckets of things you need to collect into a water system. Who do they benefit? This one benefits everyone. This one benefits everyone. This one, you can argue, benefits only, if you don't have a tap at your lot, you don't really care about the electricity running the pumps. It's not your fault that the pumps are running. And you could keep going down the operating cost. By the way, this gets murky because there are some where they're fixing infrastructure during the summer. But for intensive purposes, let's just say this is all truly one hundred percent operational and if you don't have your tap turned on, then you shouldn't bear any of these. So let's just say it's the metered people for for today's discussion. The next question is how do I bill it? The mechanism. So this is who benefits. This is what costs. Sorry for my writing. And this is how do we bill it? Today we bill this and I'm just gonna shortchange it by not making it overly complicated. We bill everybody twenty-five dollars a month. The meth, and and we we can calculate this amount of cost and we know how many of those are, so we know what this should be. And right now, only looking at the financed infrastructure, not even looking at the self-funded infrastructure, which you're supposed to do here. We're at twenty-seven fifteen, going to twenty-nine, whatever the hell it said on there, twenty-one. And so we already know we have a problem with this layer. It's possible that we're collecting too much here. I actually think we are. It's possible we're not doing enough here. I suspect we aren't. So the the point that just came up was, hey, you know, we need to figure this stuff out before we kinda start pulling a whole bunch of levers here. I think it's a valid thought, but at the same time, it's equally valid, that's why I jumped up, to say, no, no, no. We gotta deal with this segment, otherwise this whole thing falls apart. We either believe in this model or we don't. And if we do, they each have to live on their own merits. Because if you're gonna set a mechanism here, let's just say the whole thing was cost per gallon, no fixed fee for that. If you're gonna say, well, I don't have to really draw firm lines here and I don't really buy this model a hundred percent, then, you know, you can end up with the wrong number here if you said, well, we're we're collecting too much here, we're collecting too low to cover these costs. So I really do think, while it's one water system, if you buy into this methodology, you're saying, they're kind of three separate rates. And if you looked at someone's bill, they should expect to see, whether we show it to them once a year in a town hall meeting or we send it to them on paper every month, you should expect to see those layers on your bill, infrastructure costs, reserves, operations costs, something like that. I'm not proposing we change people's bills, by the way, but in an intellectual discussion, that's what I would say. And then this should be some sort of fixed dollar, I think, I don't know. Let's just make up a number, two zero. You know, something should be collected for a rainy day. I don't actually know what's the tail and what's the dog here right now. I know this number is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year without the equity finance projects, going up to seven something. I know this is about seven hundred thousand or so, maybe less, maybe four hundred, five hundred thousand. And this number, I don't know, it's probably a half million to a million here, it's my wild ass guess. So someday we're gonna have, not someday, in the next six months if you choose to embark on this project, we're gonna figure that out. But for right now, we've already made this policy choice and and the accountant in me just says, we probably should deal with that. I do think, you know, setting my accountant aside, and setting aside the part of me that doesn't think it's that big of a deal if it goes from twenty-five to thirty, I think everyone wants to be careful with this. And everyone wants to to minimize the number of times we hit people and to the extent we can, the dollar amount. Now, I think for me, where I'm heading out on this is we're not gonna have that much flexibility with the dollar amount. I think we're gonna have to hit people with, I actually am gonna really push on us to include self-financed projects in here too, because right now they're being fit funded entirely by the metered people out of reserves. And the only people that contribute to reserves are the metered people. So the metered people are paying for the water tank lining this year. The meter people were gonna pay for the five hundred thousand of the Vista project that was gonna be self-financed. The meter people paid for the reserve portions that we had to contribute to the last eight projects. And I don't think that's right. Our policy is that it should be everyone for infrastructure costs. We just happened to take a shortcut and only charge that loan once to everyone because we could, because we could see the numbers easier. But I would argue, we have this sophistication to do it for the internally financed projects as well. So in my opinion, when we do this work, this number's gonna be, I'm throwing that number, it's gonna be thirty-five dollars, it's not gonna be twenty-nine. And so I won't have any input really on the decision of whether you go twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five or a dollar a year for ten years, you guys will figure that out. But but just, I wanna, I'm gonna keep insisting that we sort of think about the model correctly. By the way, I fully expect this number to be too high. Because that's where our surplus has come from, we know we're doing it.
So we can think it's too high because we're.
Because we always have extra money there.
This year's bill was a hundred and some dollars.
We can't, we can't hire, we can't spend, we are careful, we, you know, all the reasons why we have the surplus. Frankly, you could get fancy and say that, oh, we meant to do that, that's really this thing, but I don't know that we're doing that, I think we're really just putting too much there.
Well, that's what your proposal is for the next six months, is to kind of define some of this stuff and timings and things like that. Because if you look at it, on the left-hand side, if you didn't, you just said we didn't change a thing. We didn't add to it, we didn't subtract it. About eight years out, our first loan comes to maturity.
Yeah, exactly.
And in in, when you look at these things, you know, you plan for the future and your need, your probability for need of a reserve for replacement is very low at the beginning on a new system. And it goes exponentially higher the older it gets. Well, there's gonna be money in those those future years to put in that reserve. And it's gotta be, but it's gotta be a decision not made by a a council or a board, it's gotta be made by a group, which includes the guy sitting in front of me. Because he has the the experience or the access to the knowledge to tell us, when when are we, when are our maintenance? Because that maintenance falls into the second column. And that's another thing, is how are we gonna fund that if we have it? So the timing is everything, I I'm excited about what you're talking about.
So a couple things. You guys have all got property tax bills. If you've lived anywhere other than here, you get bonds, because we don't do bonds in Miami. But if you live other places, you saw bonds on it. I've been in a place long enough to watch the bonds go away. So I had my sixty mils or whatever it was, three hundred mils in California. And my bills went down because eventually components, layers of the charges came out. And to Boyd's point, I just wanna do something real quick. Mayor and I talked about this in the week today. Right now, and I'm gonna splurge this because I don't have a lot of paper here, but we have a rate for this one, I'll call it one, and it's twenty-five dollars a month. And and if we leave that rate like this forever, at twenty-five, and we have a rate for this that's about forty dollars right now. So that would be about here, that rate goes like this and probably goes up over time. And then we have this one, which we're probably not doing much. To Boyd's point, this line, just like those bonds, is gonna go down if the loans get paid off. And a an easy choice for a water utility is to say, well, we're just gonna take that money and move it over here. And you can do that. I would propose you probably come up with this independently and just let these go off like a bond schedule does. But that's a choice we're gonna have to confront when we think about how we wanna communicate rates and set rates to to the time, to the people. So I hope that was not too complicated, but that that was that point. I I do wanna come back to Ru's point, which is, okay, so what are we gonna do before we figure all this great stuff out? And I think there's a big risk of doing something stupid before we figure all this stuff out. I said I wasn't gonna give an opinion, but I never do that, do I? I I do think there's a lot of, there's a lot of momentum behind the two dollars in January. I think people expect it, it's budgeted for what that's worth. It's not much, it moves us in the right direction and the accountant in me says, it's what we need. So I actually have to fight to find a reason not to do the two dollars. Like I just mentioned four reasons to do it. I don't, other than some soft, well, we don't wanna make a change, then make another change. I can't think of a reason, I just laid out four objective reasons why you would do it. So I I have to search to find a reason not to do it. And I think that reason not to do it is uncertainty. It's, well, what if we find we've gotta raise rates or maybe even cut rates because we're collecting too much here, I don't know. You know, I don't know, it's hard to predict the future. I I say, if I were having to make the decision, I'd probably think about the two dollars in January and I'd commit to this process that I'm gonna describe in a minute for doing a rates project in the next two to six months. I just don't know how long it's gonna take with the resources we get. And then we'll have a better answer, but I wouldn't do a lot before I had a better answer, at most I'd do January.
To the side check, I mean, we're talking about two bucks in the SAF.
Yeah.
But, so we budgeted, you know, the operating expenses for this year, knowing that our costs are going up, insurance is going up, I mean, our labor costs are going up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we go, we can't just focus just on the two dollars.
So fair point.
You may have to go four and five and the.
One of the few things that did raise costs, raised rates this year and our costs did go up for everything, literally. We may not be filling all of our vacant chairs, but that's sort of a separate issue, you know, the cost, what we believe the cost of our businesses is higher in this fiscal year than last year. Everything's higher, literally everything, that's a fair point.
Dave, one other thing, that I I'm a nag, so I never pass up a chance to nag. We've been asking and trying to get the communication set between us and our SCADA system. There's a lot of stuff in that SCADA system that we've talked about using to do some forecasting and expecting when expenses are gonna get in. And I'm I'm nervous about doing this without that information. You talk about making a good decision based on bad information.
Or lacking information.
Or lack of there, in this case. So I just bring that up one more time and and I, it's not a six-month project to get that SCADA forecast put together. It's a, it's a couple of months if we.
It's a, it's a couple of months if we can get the data.
I thought you were gonna say it was more.
No, I'm trying to say, but we, it's like anything else, we've got to have it uh, and know what we're getting. So, I just bring that up
Okay.
as a, another, and not an impediment, but something to help us make sure we get to the end with the right numbers.
Marty?
In, in deference to your not having a political bone, I've been in a...
Don't be delusional.
I've spent most of my career in a political setting, and dealing with
Asymptasies.
with setting rates. And one, one thing that I can tell you from, uh, a lot of experience is that when your constituency expects certain increases at certain times, and those happen, and then you add additional increases that they may not have been expecting, that's when you piss 'em off. And as I used to tell, um, uh, our state president and several members of the assembly, uh, if you want better attention paid to what you're doing, raise your rates, and people will pay attention. Make 'em angry, and they show up. The, the thing here, I get, I get the model, and I agree with the model except in one aspect, and that's when you started talking about rates over time, and that the loans go down, as the loans go away, that can possibly go down. What's not anticipated there is that you may have to take out new loans.
Yes, it's the third bucket. It's the third bucket.
But then, that center line doesn't go down, it, it, it could, it could in fact go up. The only place where we're guaranteed it's gonna go down is the first loan, the one Boyd's just comes due in about eight years. Uh, you get five-hundred thousand back, um, that, that then can go into...
No, that's not the one.
Not that one.
Oh, it's not that one?
That one's still got another twenty-some.
Oh, okay, then, then I'm wrong there, but that's where you get a guaranteed return on an encumbered debt.
Believe me, I know we'll have additional projects that will replace the ones from today, but I just have a different...
We're not, we're not...
We still have one map we want, or, we still have one map we want to finish the system, and we did it, we gotta demonstrate to the state that we're, we're able to pay...
Yeah, one, one thing you gotta be aware of is, part of the, part of the reasoning for the loans that we got was because we were raising rates and we're going to be self-sufficient, 'cause they know these funds aren't going to last forever. So, if we, we gotta be aware of, when these loans do run out, the money that should be going to that loan should be going to our reserves so that we can be self-sufficient, or not relying on outside funding services.
You guys aren't understanding what I'm saying, I'm not doing, 'cause I don't communicate, both of you think that somehow I don't have those future projects. 'Cause there, there's only three buckets on the wall, and they are the third bucket.
No, I get, I get the saving for the future.
So, I think about the two buckets separately, because I have to account for them separately, but the future is there, and those are the new projects that will take them.
Saving for the future is, I get that. I also understand that, that, that depending on what could happen to our system, even in the future, we may not have enough.
No question.
And, and, and so, you kinda have to anticipate that that line may not go down, it may just continue going straight. But to, to get to the political aspect for the people that have a constituency, the thing I would suggest, you've got two choices, the way I see it. You can do the one-and-one, and not inform the constituents that you're gonna do it that way, and, and get the backlash from the people who pay attention to their bill. Or, you can do one for enough to cover the whole thing, and explain that, and do it enough so that you don't have to keep doing it. You keep, you can go, get back to your two dollars a year increase, or whatever, whatever the council believes is, is appropriate, so that they, so that your constituents can plan for it. But, we had a situation where we raised our dues, and, uh, and we did it for political reasons. We told the membership that's what we were doing, they were all for it. And then six months later, we negotiated a contract that gave us wage increases. Inherent with a wage increase, we got a dues increase, and that second dues increase almost got half the state board removed. And, and it was, it was something nobody anticipated, even though it happens every time you get a wage increase, the dues go up, because it's tied to whatever you're getting paid. Here, we don't even have that mechanism. So, people are gonna wonder why we, why we paid, uh, two dollars more in January, and then we gotta pay another two dollars in July, unless they're told ahead of time to anticipate that. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, or
Right.
but, but how to do it so that you don't piss off the people that you're gonna come to later and ask to vote for you again. Unless you're not gonna run again, in which case, don't worry about it.
So, I don't think this is, uh, I'm gonna speak for, for other people for a second, but I, it's my fault, 'cause I took us there, but, uh, we, so all stopped taking us there, but, you know, I think the, I think the council's heard all of us probably more than they wanted to. Our points of view on, on whether you should or shouldn't make these raises, but you, you guys need to, you know, sort of tune on that separately. I don't wanna monopolize your entire workshop to give you feedback on that one topic, and I think we've all had...
You know, I think I would say on that...
I think we've all had our chance.
Yeah, I mean, part of this, when you run for political office, is there are tough decisions. You've gotta make some hard decisions sometimes.
Yeah.
When we put that SAF in, it was not popular.
Yeah.
But now, it's, uh, it, it, you know, now, it's, it was the right thing to do, and everyone should contribute to the system, and, and so, and people move on. Thank goodness.
Mayor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Let me, let me jump in for just a minute.
Okay.
We've got a timing issue here, folks, we gotta deal with. Because by changing the, the water rates by ordinance, something's gotta be done one month from today.
Yep.
So, we've gotta decide whether or not we're gonna do January and June, July, or a bigger one in, in January.
In July.
And that needs to happen.
Or in January.
Yes, you could have thought of that.
There's three choices.
Yep.
I think to Ru's point, um, if the analysis is, trying to get all of this, this done, which I make sense to me, I think it's the right way to go, prior to January might be difficult.
Be hard.
But it would not prior to June.
And you probably don't have to do it to make that decision. You guys tell us if you want any more from this group, if you wanna get a more formal process in the next thirty days, that Taylor mentions, that's all we have. Then...
The first reading.
Uh, 'cause even if we're gonna get into resolution, you need to do a first reading of the change of the ordinance, right? So, either way, you're on a three-month ordinance call.
Yeah.
So, you guys tell us, 'cause I feel like we're going too far into this right now, um, but you tell us of how you want, if you want more from this group with regard to this decision of two, four, or four up front, whatever.
I did have a question, it, like you guys were previously saying, they're, they had over, I don't know, taken more money than they should have, so we have something to actually put towards this for like a year or two, or three years, I think.
Not that far.
No.
No, but like a year, so if we... No, you don't think a year?
I think it buys you the ability to postpone a change by a year, um, or a portion of a change. That might be the best way to say it.
I, I, this model's been in place for many, many years. It's been in place when I was mayor, so it's been in place for fifteen years, maybe. And we've, we've made this thing so that it's very reliable, it's difficult to understand if you're not involved with it. But before you make a decision to raise it more than two dollars for the next fiscal, for the next twelve months, I would like the opportunity to show the council my, my, my work. It should, you need to have confidence that you can make those payments. And I can't arg, but I, I can't argue with Dave, because he's looking at it from an accounting, from an audit standpoint. But we've been audited by the, by, uh, four or five times by the, the state, and, uh, not the state, but our auditors, and they've never, ever said what we're doing was illegal.
Oh, it's not an audit issue.
And we've gone to the state on our loans, when we were short paying, you know, we were not collecting enough, and said, here's our plan, here's our reserve, here's what we're doing, and they said, no problem, you guys are in charge, do it. So, I would like the opportunity to have the same time and see if I can convince you to get, not to convince you, to give you enough, uh, uh, faith in that system that you won't have to do it again in July. I think this thing that he's talking about, the model, needs to be done. It should've been done, you know, years ago. And let's see what it comes out, and then you make your mind up in your next twelve months. But it seems like there's two different issues here. No. One, one, the two dollars is gonna get us back to where we should've been, but we got another loan coming due. It's in the, it's in the model, that's what I'm trying to say. If you understand, all those numbers are in my model, and all those things are planned for, and I can show you that you will make your obligation, and you can do it two dollars a year on, excuse me, it'll go back to one dollar a year after this year, two dollars this year and one dollar next year, and you'll be, you'll be there. And I think I can show it. Now, there may be some things that David can tell me that are not in the model, that should be there, that would change my mind, but I think you're, you're, you're jumping too quick.
Do you, like, I just did the roll forward and added the three-fifty, and you and I could spend ten minutes and see when it runs out.
Sure. And I can show you on the model, it doesn't...
Kristin asked a specific question, which is how long does our extra buy us? And the answer, as I sit here right in front of you, is I couldn't give you an exact number of months, 'cause part of it depends on, on, is it zero, or two dollars, or one dollar, you know, so there's different ways to chew up the extra that we have. Uh, I think Boyd has some confidence that it will allow you to, to have some latitude for more than a few years.
I can tell you, you can go out ten years, at, at, not two dollars, but one dollar a year for the loan payment portion of it, by all of us. And you will never go zero, you'll have a, if, if the thing set is that way I've got it set up, you'll never get low, lower than about fifty thousand dollars of known costs. So, you gotta buffer a fifty thousand for the next eight, eight, ten years.
This, this year, you have a two for SAF and one for, uh...
One out of base fee. It's two and two, but it's, but for, for the column one, it's two from the SAF and one for the base fee. And then from then on, it's one dollar each of us on the base fee, not...
Isn't the same issue as we're still not setting away, we're still not adding a reserve fund?
We're still not doing something right, so, and I'm actually, this, the fact that we are having to move this three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars out of the system reserve and put it over here in the loan reserve, actually really illustrates the difference between what Boyd's talking about and what I'm trying to get you guys to think about at the same time. I don't know that they get, end up with different answers, but there are two different perspectives on the same issue. Because we no longer have, as we sit here right now, we don't have any extra money in the loan payment reserve. So, the ability to smooth out our rates in the future, because we had a cookie jar to raid, it's not there anymore. We used it for some other purpose in August. What we're saying we're gonna do tonight with the resolution is, is get the cookie jar back. And, and I actually, I'm glad that I can then use that to say, that's what y'all are doing. If you choose to use the cookie jar to smooth out rates, you are taking that money away from the system reserve. You are truly, not even metaphorically, taking that money out of the system reserve. It just happens to be a coincidence that we literally have to take it out.
Luck.
But that is truly what you're doing. You are saying, we are not gonna, this is not debatable. You are truly saying, we are not gonna collect enough from the ratepayers to pay the loans, because we're gonna take three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars out of the system reserve that we could use for some other purpose, any other purpose, really, in the water system, and we're gonna use it to smooth rates. I don't, I, there is no equivocation, you guys, that is a hundred percent the next one we go. It is true.
What happened is...
Don't take the three-fifty out, Ron, sorry, let me finish. Don't take the three-fifty out tonight, cancel that resolution, I don't support it anymore. Don't take that three-fifty out. You will not be able to smooth rates for the next few years.
You won't be able to make your payments this year.
That's my point. So, look, it, it's funny, because we kinda screwed up and ended up with this, but the trade-off here, don't, don't kid yourselves. The trade-off here is to, and I'm not saying what's right or wrong, I just wanna make sure you understand the trade-off, and don't go, ah, it's all good. It's not. The trade-off, 'cause everything has a price, is we can smooth rates and not charge the full amount of the loans for a longer period of time, 'cause we're not charging the full amount of the loans today, guys. So, and we're not gonna, and we're gonna, and we're gonna continue to not charge the full amount of the loans, because we're taking three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars out of the system reserve tonight to give us the funds to do that. You are truly doing that, that is not debatable, that's black and white.
I don't understand what you're saying.
That's too bad.
Over, over the last, over the last year, we failed, or however many years, months it is, to, his model assumes that this money will be collected and we're putting it in the loan payment reserve for the last two months. We did not
I know.
do that.
Give me, I'll give you a different way of looking at it. The three-fifty that's extra, if we all agree that's extra, kinda?
They should've been...
They put it in there years ago, so instead of putting it into the system reserve years ago, they stuck it into the loan reserve. One way or the other, whether it was done five years ago, or you're doing it tonight, you're actually doing both. That money, the other home for that money, you have two ways to spend that money. One way is to put it in the system reserve and save it for a rainy day. The other way is to give it back to the ratepayers and charge them less than they should otherwise be paying for their loans. You're spending three-fifty, it's just where do you wanna spend it? Do you wanna put it into the reserves, or do you wanna spend it on a gift back to the ratepayers?
To me, it's...
It is truly what you're doing.
We charge them, that money, that three-fifty is in two buckets. One is you need, and I don't, I'll make the number, two-hundred-and-fifty, just to meet this year's obligation, so you're not taking that out of your... The hundred thousand, if you wanna say that's for the future, which it is, around that, then I would agree with you.
Yeah, it's something about a hundred and...
You know what I mean? It's not the three-fifty. I mean, this was a error that needs to be corrected.
One-seventy.
And we spent, we've already spent that money somewhere else.
Yeah, about half of it, about half of it is the cushion that you're talking about buying, buying politi, call it half, whatever it is. I'm looking at something close to half. So, anyways, that, that's truly what it is. The, the, the reason I just want you guys to double-click on this and pause on it is, you know, somewhere along the line, we made a very astute policy decision to, and by the way, if you think this is hard, that's all this project is, and so I'll tell you right now, I'm not gonna work on this project. If we do the project, and at the end, the political committee says, that's all really interesting, but we're just gonna do this because it's politically expedient. So, I'm not gonna spend one more minute, and that's fine, 'cause I got a lot of stuff to do, and you guys don't care, but it just doesn't make sense to spend the time to do a detailed model and make policy choices about how you're gonna bill people to reimburse the fiduciarily responsible water fund that you run, and then say, yeah, but that's three dollars, and we should, I don't wanna do that. I don't like that, so I, I would never tell you I did. If y'all like that, 'cause you gotta get re-elected, that's great, but I won't do that, and I won't be a part of it, 'cause I don't like, I don't have better things to do.
Well, the reality...
This is an easy example of it, guys.
Yeah, and the reality is, this happens all over the place with smaller commu, with towns, is they're not funding their systems.
That's, that's kinda what I was trying to caution the, the council on, is, I don't disagree with the model that you put up there, without doing the math myself. I'm willing to accept your answers to the whiz.
But I can do the simplest math, okay?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, hitting the constituency multiple times will piss them off. It'll piss me off, and I can afford this with, without breaking a sweat. I realize we have people in the community who can't, but, but if you keep hitting them, you'll anger them. So, the political decision is, how do you do it with the least amount of resistance? It seems apparent that you have to do it.
So, this, the other flip side of that is, the state of Wyoming says that a water system must be self-sufficient, and cannot rely on outside income. And right now, we're saying that the water system is not self-sufficient, and the way to get the water system to be self-sufficient is to raise the rates.
Wrong, wrong. We are more than self-sufficient, because we have surplus funds, and keep that in mind.
Technically, that's...
What you're trying to do is to look at this on an instant, this afternoon, by tonight, are we self-sufficient or not? The answer is, we are self-sufficient, because we have surplus funds. What we're talking about, is when do we spend the surplus funds to make payments versus just making the, the direct payment from the user to the, uh, payments? That would be my, my opinion of that, 'cause I, I don't, how the hell can you be not self-sufficient if you've got extra money in the bank?
Yeah, we, we are, that's, that's the technical level.
It's the, it's the way that the state says, is they're like, they take how much is your loan, divide it by your, your, uh, uh, pay, or your rates, and say, can you make your payment? And I tell you what, you can make your payment by doing that.
We, we know. It was...
So, I don't...
I think everyone is on board with doing the move, and I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing, moving the money, I'm, I won't vote to raise rates by two dollars in January, just because I feel that if we do that, we're continuing the status quo, and it might just be too easy not to do the work we need to do to find out what the real increase needs to be. So, you put it all off until July. That's just where I am. It's not that I don't think the rates probably logically need to go up based on the work Boyd's already done.
Right.
But we also don't know, and we have never gotten, well, not to my knowledge, gotten after, what is that real reserve amount we need for that future pot of money, that third column over there? And until we can do that, I mean, that's gotta be part of what happens the first six months of the year, or between now and July, whatever, so...
And you're two questions where you just, I understand what you're saying, so two things. One, um, a quick one, just so you guys know, if the math suggested it, would you support four or five dollars in July then?
Yes.
That's a lot. And the second thing...
So, are you suggesting July then?
Didn't we do it in July now?
Oh, I think that's what we was advocating.
Yeah, rather than do January and July.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I think that's what we was advocating, and, and it's what Marty's... I think that's what we was advocating and, and it's what Marty's sort of communications.
If I understood what you were.
That's, that's, I don't care when you raise them.
And they might get really mad in July and, but they might get mad when you would twice.
They would get mad.
They probably get mad after you did it twice.
Only one constituent, I don't even care within reason how much you raise them. But continuing to raise them is, is what is going to anger people because then they're gonna think you're either not doing your jobs well. Or you think we just have a pot of money out there that we don't have earmarked for other stuff. And you can come in like the federal government and take it from us. And that's gonna anger them. And I've, I've heard that for twenty years of being an elected representative.
So once we switch to July, then it's every year we would be able to do it in July. I feel like this is trying to anyway, because I couldn't remember exactly when we paid, like, or have our property taxes come out, but I knew it was earlier. And then it's like January, we're increasing water and then we're increasing our, our property taxes.
Communicated in like March or something and.
The other thing I would recommend is that you communicate. Why?
Oh, for sure.
Why you are changing the amount you're gonna collect? If you're gonna change it from two dollars, which has been standard for the last few years. You let them know why you're increasing it and what to ex, what, what you, they can reasonably expect in the future. Is this gonna be, say you take it to five dollars, are we gonna get a five dollar raise every July? Or are you gonna try to get back down to two or three dollars?
So I remember last year, we're sorry, go ahead, Taylor.
So if I can understand you correctly, Rue, what you're proposing is that we don't do anything in January. Implement the study and then come up with a number in July.
Yes.
You wanna make that as a motion?
I can do that.
You guys do that here.
Yeah, you can do it in a work session.
We have a call.
And it could just, so. Well, I was gonna say, I think to give us the flexibility, it would be nice, I mean, I heard what Boyd was saying about doing it in ordinance. But having the flexibility to do this in resolution might be better. Where we're, I mean, just next month, we would be struggling for January if, you know, to get an ordinance out. So I think this kinda shows maybe we need a resolution.
So we really need as a motion to, to try to switch the ordinance.
Well, we need an ordinance to change the ordinance.
Which, if, um, the minutes from March, I had already volunteered to do that.
Yes, you did, yeah. So I would make a motion that the council, um, moves forward with updating the water ordinances. Um, so that we can do resolutions to change fees. Um, and that we do not do a two dollar raise in January and instead implement, um, a rate setting project to study it. So that we can be prepared during the next budget, um, for any rate increase. Or if a miracle were to occur, decrease that might occur in July instead. I know that was really long.
It, it wasn't, I'm supposed to repeat that back, but I'm not, I can't.
So, oh, let me finish typing it, I'll tell you which.
Rue.
Okay, well.
A second there.
It's impressive.
Okay, move to second, I'd hold please.
So, um.
Hold on.
Hold please.
Hold on.
Okay.
Kristen's gonna read, try to read that back for me.
Okay, so I have Councilman Rock moved to have the council move forward with updating the water ordinance to have, um, not eight. Have rates set by resolution and not do an increase in January, but to do a rate study, determine the timing and amount for a rate increase.
To correspond with the budget.
To correspond with the budget.
Yeah.
Taylor seconded it.
Taylor seconded.
So discussion.
Did you have a question?
A discussion to implement this, we're gonna have to write a very carefully worded instruction to the water board. Tell them that they're gonna do this study?
No, we haven't decided that.
Let's talk about.
Let's talk about.
I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna do this.
How we do the study? I've got a slide to disperse and discussion of that.
So I'm gonna hold this out to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Okay, um.
There you go.
Dave, do you wanna?
Yeah, okay, cool, so, um. So how do we go forward? Uh, that was the first step. Um, you guys just did number one and I guess that gets read three times. And, uh, we're, it also took care of number two, which is that the answer is we're not gonna do it. And, and then Ron raised the next question, which is how do we do this? Uh, these are my thoughts, so it's just a spur discussion and the right people are mostly doing it, so. You know, having watched the town for eighteen months and having done other things with my life for thirty years, uh, the one thing I've learned is you know, things like this, Project D, that take a lot of both detailed cranking spreadsheets for hours and canvassing experts and getting input from a lot of people who know more than you do, it takes a lot of time and it takes dedicated resources to the extent you can get them. And we're in a part-time volunteer world here, so we, we have our challenges setting up a successful team here. I think people have seen recent evidence of that. So, um, my suggestion as always when I start these is somebody at this table, not including me, uh, would be a perfect leader for it. If there's someone with time and energy, uh, and expertise, that would be great. Um, somebody at the council level, and even if they don't have the ability to lead it full time, the second bullet point. If you need to find somebody else to lead it, you know, kind of that's the full time project leader, at least have a council person who is their coordinator and liaison to the council. I, I hesitate to say this and I'm glad everybody's here in the room, I wish there was even a couple more faces. I would not give this to the water board, I would not give this to the FAB. I think you need more people, not less people. I think you need at least some people from the water board and at least some people from the FAB. And ideally, some people, I don't know who they are, that know something about this topic. And this guy in the hat over here, well, both guys in the hat, frankly, I would love to have on, on a team. So I think you try to build a, a good sized team and you set a different expectation than our volunteer boards. You know, you're not here to review, you're not here to, to, um, to assist with making decisions. This is a working team and they're gonna have real work. I mean, if I told you how many hours I've put on some of the projects, just cranking spreadsheets that I just don't think many other people have the time to do. So it's hard to find people to do these things. Um, this one will be pretty spreadsheet intensive, Boyd's done this before, I'm sure he knows.
Is this just for the six months?
The, I, I actually hope it's a hun, a ton less, so.
Oh, really?
I'm hoping it's two months.
Your, your timeline, doesn't that have to be April?
Yeah, let's come back to that, if I could just, wanna get to that one, please, hold that thought. So, um, uh, so I think you, I think who is on the team is the important part. Some, some are all of the water board, some are all of the FAB and hopefully some other people that we can all dream up that would be useful here. Um, one person to lead it and just one, whether it's a council person or someone else, teams don't lead things, one person leads things. Um, and I'm hoping it can be done in a couple of months. I mean, I, I don't know, is it two months or six months? I hope to God it's two months. Things take as long as you give them, so if I were leading it, I would, I would set a crisp timeline and make people commit to it, realize that they're there to work and they're there to meet every couple of weeks, cause that's what this town needs in terms of volunteer effort on this project. Um, and then you wanna sync it up with the planning process and to Taylor's point, you wanna be ready to implement rate changes on July first, which means you gotta have a communication plan before that, you gotta have a resolution before that, you gotta have the budget put down. Um, you know, whether the numbers here have to be to the dollar, kinda tied to what you budget in terms of expected revenue, I would say probably not. So if this goes past April, which by no means should it, it wouldn't be the end of the world, but certainly we should probably try to get this done in the next. Look, we can start as soon as the team can be assembled and then it's probably a couple of months after that. This is, this could be fifty spreadsheets or it could be five. If I am involved, they'll try to make it the five spreadsheet version, more about expert input on how long things last and how things break and what kind of repair costs are gonna look like and wild ass guesses about what a water system's gonna cost in fifty years. You know, I'd focus on the important soft attributes and not creating forty pages of spreadsheets. That's everything I know about it, but I just wanted to start the discussion with you guys.
Cause the budget process, we have to start reading that in April.
April?
Yeah, and so some numbers should be in.
Yeah.
At that point.
Yeah, there'll be a revenue number in there and like I was trying to say, if we put in one point four million dollars for water system revenue, it's, it's gonna be pretty close to. If we had to keep tweaking on this, we could, I'm hoping we have put this to bed way before that.
So what, what, a side note, one of the clutch questions in this motion is that we know now that our income for the last six months of the year is gonna be.
Twenty four thousand dollars less.
Twenty four thousand dollars less, so we need to keep track of that.
Yeah, but what was our exit, what was our?
We'll be fine.
Yeah, I know, we'll be fine.
Especially with the three hundred and fifty.
Doesn't help revenue yet.
Okay. All right, I think we've, we've done that one.
Beat that horse.
We have beat that horse together, so.
So on this topic, I think you guys have to decide if you wanna take the project down, like, actually you did.
We did decide.
You gotta figure out which of you five is gonna, and, uh, and go find your sucker I'm a volunteer.
Heard you the first time.
All right, that's, uh, that's everything, Adam.
Okay, very good, thank you so much. That was excellent, thank you. Um, so the next time, it, my, may, matters from the mayor and council, unfortunately I have like nine, but I'm gonna go through these fairly quickly. Uh, the first one is the, there was a question about the fire insurance rating and Kirsten has kinda taken that one on. So, um, you talked to the fire department and they wanna wait, is that what?
I did, yeah, they suggested we wait because they want us to get a better rating and they said that, um, having more, uh, supplies on their truck, which they've ordered and all that coming in, and then also some things they wanted to do with the building and he wasn't specific, but that we just kinda upgrade.
There is some things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, he said that that would give us a better rating, so he was suggesting like December to reach back out and hopefully having it done, which is.
With this building or?
The first responder building.
Across the street.
They wanna do some stuff that improve our fire rating?
Yeah.
Well, it has to be more of a fire station right now, it's just a.
Yeah, he said he would try to, that was the point to maybe get it to that. So, but I didn't ask him specifically what they were thinking of doing, I'm assuming we can find that out in December.
The new truck was not supplied, there was nothing, I mean, you open the new truck up, there's nothing there.
No, which is normal.
Very, very normal, but what they're gonna, gotta do is get the equipment on that truck.
Yeah.
And given the deadlines to get stuff to show up, December might be optimistic.
So they think that they're supplying that truck and upgrading his building is gonna, gonna change our fire rating?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
A lot, that's a brand new.
Fire hydrants. Another big one is the fire hydrants.
Yeah, that, that wasn't included in the last one, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he has.
Yeah, I think we're fine lighting till December.
Yeah, and he said that he thinks the rating will be really good, like he's suggesting.
The large you're talking about?
Yeah, Ted.
So he's got, he's got the lead to work like hell to reduce our fire rating?
I think it's honestly more for their own safety to have better, I mean, the rating reflects like they're doing what they should be doing too. So it's, it's, you know, a win-win for everybody if we can get the rating.
Okay, so, um, the next one I have is the WIP twenty twenty-three and I'm so glad Ryan's here, so.
Finally, Ryan gets to speak, huh?
I sent some note out to the council and I sent the, the letter out so they kinda know what's going on.
Okay.
Can I go through all three of them?
Sure, yeah, you can do that.
So we got two good and one odd.
I think all of our jaws dropped when that happened.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So I have three notices of award for you guys to consider.
Okay.
First one's for the Red Project.
Okay, and they're aware of that one?
Um, yeah, and that was, that was under budget, so.
Yeah, which was very exciting.
The award was four seven and we budgeted six, so.
Mm-hmm.
And that includes the chip ceiling?
That's the whole, the whole project.
Yeah, so that was pretty good, so do we have a motion in this meeting?
We have a motion for the, uh, chip seal project.
For the chip seal, okay, so we'll need to get the others into.
Quick question.
Just that and the chip seal.
Okay, Kristen, go ahead.
Is that for Vista, the first one, I'm sorry?
No, it's for the, for the Rose Project.
Ram, Rambleberry.
Hey, Rambleberry.
And the chips.
Oh, yes, got it.
The maintenance, okay, that's that one.
Okay, the other one is the water improvement project twenty twenty-three. Um, so we got a very good project with the price on that. Um, I've sent in a inquiry to the manager with SLIB to see if we can expand that. To maximize our funding, cause we're under the grant amount that we've got.
Substantial, yeah.
And the interesting thing about the, how they're handling that grant is, you know, we have that match. They're funding a hundred percent upfront, so once their grant is done, then our reserves come in.
They've never done that.
No, so it's kinda, kinda interesting, so.
That is weird.
We don't, if we maximize, maximize our grant and maybe dip a little bit into the reserve but not go all the way through. Fine, we're, we're getting the project that we wanted for.
Right.
And we can possibly expand.
But we still have other, two other projects we wanted to do at some point, so.
Getting the project where we budgeted was one point three, you wouldn't budget.
Our grant was one point three.
Our grant was one point three, but the total project was two.
That was everything, the, the construction amount was like one point six or something.
Yeah, then Ryan, when you're saying expanding, do you mean like going further up Vista or what?
No, like going.
Get it or four million.
East, or, eastwood?
Yeah, eastwood is old.
Eastwood, Cedar Drive from the take north to the east.
Chunka Hardwin.
Parts of the next project.
Okay, yeah.
Not extra.
Cut in the last four million dollars.
Yeah?
What, so I, I think you just addressed what could potentially happen with regard to the excess grant from the state.
Yeah.
What, do we know what this means for the ARPA money though?
That's what that ARPA money is.
Yeah, so.
The two eighty-seven.
That would be the states of that pie that we're offering up for this project, ours is system reserve and the ARPA money.
That was our funds, right.
Yeah, he's saying that if we can add on to the project, the state's actually gonna fund.
Fund a hundred percent of their grant until it's done, cause they need to get that, those funds dispersed before twenty twenty-four.
So I got that.
And then.
And then my question is, can we still get the ARPA without then change the project or is that harder?
That's, that's what my question to them is.
It's still an open question. So we don't know whether we'll be able to use, utilize the ARPA.
Which ARPA?
The two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
No, that's already ours, that was, that was, um, what was it called, that, that was revenue replacement for COVID, so that money is ours. She just has to track it.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily that we can ask for more or anything, that's just the chunk that's already.
We had planned to spend it on this project.
Right. Correct.
And so if there's nothing to spend it on. What do we do with that much, do we have to send it back?
That's what I would.
No.
That's, that's.
What are we doing?
We find another project.
Find another one.
That, that's what I would recommend, if, if, if we go through, if they can allow the expansion, we go through the grant and we get at least through all that ARPA funds. And then you can make a decision if you wanna go further reserves. My alternative to the further on reserves, cause what was it, four hundred and something thousand, but we matched with the reserves. The next one, um.
If we, if, we, we only have to spend our reserves in conjunction with their, sure?
No, which is odd.
Which was odd, cause the first pay application, they said just go a hundred percent, cause we need to get this money out before November twenty twenty-four. And so, we're gonna fund that a hundred percent till our grant's done, then you guys make your rest.
Okay, I think we got it.
So, the next project is the tank lining.
Yep.
That's on my list, too.
So the contractor that actually provided us budget numbers for this, and I even added that twenty percent to it. They came in three times higher than what they told us. So.
So over a half million dollars.
That was close, it was four hundred and something.
Close, pretty close.
No, there was a lower one, that was three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So. Which we had a hundred and seventy, so we're looking at a hundred and sixty thousand more.
It almost sounds like you didn't want the job.
Uh. So there's, there's a few things to consider. If, if we don't have to dip into our reserves for this, this water project, some of those reserves that we've dedicated to that could go to this project, that hundred and sixty thousand. The other thing, we can postpone, we possibly postpone this and try again next time, I'm not sure what Stephen's attempts have been with that.
He, they, he talked to, um, so Stephen reached out to the EPA to find out if we could, cause we're under that obligation right now that we were supposed to have that project done by November. So he reached out to find if we could have an extension on that and he did actually speak to somebody, they're sending over the paperwork that we need to fill out to request that extension. Um, there's probably a pretty good chance that we will be able to extend that. We'll just have to know kind of a deadline, but we basically told them that our budgets doesn't support that right now. our budgets doesn't support that right now, uh, we're gonna have to go into the next fiscal year before we can rebudget that project, um.
Okay. So they'll give us that extension, that would tell.
Do you believe? Do, do you believe the bid is, would be lower in the next twelve months, is there a rationale for that?
Um, potentially, we.
In other words, what is buying time bias?
Buying time right now buys us, um.
Finding money.
Finding a contractor that is not currently busy.
Okay, so you think it's a, a supply and demand issue that's driving up the price?
I think it's. I think it's. Not, not two or three times as it was, but.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry for my follow-up, could the ARPA money be used for this, or is there some specific restrictions on it?
It could.
Yeah, it could be, no, it could be used for this.
Okay.
So, so this, this kind of thing depends on what.
Could be used for roads. Whatever makes sense.
What happens with the, whatever info I get from the ARPA.
Yeah, from the state.
So, is it safe to put it off for twelve months?
Yeah, it'll be.
It's not, the, the, the situation that it's in right now, um, is not an emergency necessarily, but it's also not something that we wanna continually to push off.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it was my recommendation when we kind of discovered the problem a couple of years ago that we start making plans for it. Um, it's, we kind of got our hands forced on making plans on it when EPA caught wind of it.
The other, the other reason why postponing it. Was it two weeks ago we had an issue?
Mm-hmm, oh, yes.
We graciously visited, um, but. So, um, that's a vital component to the success of this project or even to be able to do it, so.
What was that issue?
The pumps.
Pumps.
The pumps, yeah.
Until that is completely figured.
Mm-hmm, cause the third one is out for repair now.
And. We're not gonna do anything, we're not gonna do anything with that tank until those are.
Huh?
Can we get a quick little recap on that, since you're right here? I know Mayor Houston has updates in email, but just updates.
Levels, there's three pumps, one's out for repair now, but the other two have been repaired.
Correct, they've been completely rebuilt.
Those were the two that failed in the middle of.
Right, one kind of got.
Do we understand why they failed?
Yes.
Fought us, basically, right?
That they cavitated or?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
They, they sip at the night cavitating.
So Thursday. That, that Thursday before, um, I was looking for a leak on Green Canyon.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Helped them get the valves turned off to isolate the water. Chased that, or dug down where the leak was, turned the water on, and it was coming out of the wall of the trench, so it was just coming underneath the road base, so we chased that back hundred fifty feet or so until we found where it was coming straight up. Um, turned the water off again.
It's your repair van, wasn't it?
Service saddle.
Oh, service saddle.
Turned the, the water off again, dug down to it. Um. And this time, by this time it was nine or so, it was late. Um, I had left, um, returning the wa- turning the water back on and turning the, fixing the road. Um, and that's all I heard Friday about two thirty. Um, I got a call that pumps weren't working, that water wasn't getting over the, over the top and traders' tanks were dropping, I was over in Marlton, so I'm gonna go that way home. Um, and. One of the first questions I asked was, did anybody go in the pump house last night? Um, and that was no, the problem with that was, is I mean, we've got an air, air release valve at the tank, but there's a lot of air in that line that drains, so you can fix the leak. And air in pumps is not a good thing, and, and so. Pump's cavitated. And we rebuilt one pump, kind of?
Uh, so, what happens with cavitation is that it air gets in to the water and it basically creates, um, basically steam.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we.
So it just blasts the surface, um, and instead of flowing like it should do, it just continually eats at the surface. And it can eat, it can eat through pipe.
Yeah.
Um, and that's what happened.
Oh gosh.
But.
On both.
Both of them, yeah.
The, the thing with pumps, unless it's just kind of a tickle thing, you've got to, you've got to flood the pumps, prime the pumps, and work from the door. And so, that's just.
It's a no. Mm-hmm.
So.
Is there a safeguard on those pumps at all? Um, if not, would you consider putting them on because?
There's really no electronic way to check for cavitation.
Yeah.
You have to physically hear it happening.
RPM. You can't take the RPM of that pump and make it.
It'll, it'll pump at full RPM and still cavitate.
It'll stay at RPM.
You can't tell by any, there's no, there's no electronic way to determine that.
But, but it's a, it's a manual.
And it's a, it's a manual. You know, you wanna go across the, the power curve on the, on the pump.
Well, it'll stay at the same thing, but it'll just eat away at, in, in guys.
Okay, I just know that.
For all intents and purposes is that it can tell it's water and not air, but there's no difference in the sensors.
So the, the leak earlier.
It's like running a vehicle with oil, it just.
Is what got some air in the lines, is that right, is that?
Mm-hmm.
It was them turning off the lines to isolate the leak, and then when they turned it back on, they didn't double check that the pumps got primed.
Okay.
Okay. Now, did Willie say that they changed that?
Is there like a procedure or something there?
So they can prime them now, or it's automatically done?
No, it's, it's, it's still a situation where they have to physically go in, prime them, cause there's no way to automate that either.
I can't remember exactly what he told me today. Okay.
They still have to, if it comes to that situation again where they have to isolate anything, they still have to go ma- make sure that they're primed.
Cause, cause you, you can, you can throw ARVs on those, um, before those pumps, but there's still air inside that pump if you drain the line. And so there is a manual bleed valve on the top of the pump to let the air out and then flood the pipe, flood the, flood the pump, so we'll.
So the one that could cause a leak in the first place, is it just a?
Loose service saddle.
Loose service saddle on Green Canyon.
Loose service saddle, so the saddle that goes around the pipe and then they poke a hole to go to your house, that's all that was loose.
Okay. Oh, on somebody's house, it got loose up the way up there, is that a new one?
No.
That's the old line.
And we've had that happen before, they just wear out, loosen up.
Yeah. I was just wondering if it was some of the new construction in the.
No, that line is.
That's the line scheduled to be replaced.
That's a new. Yeah, that's the line scheduled to be replaced.
Perfect, my goodness.
There's a reason.
Remember that additional amount that was there?
Yeah.
So is there any, um, any other factors involved, like maintenance, or was it really just it was a procedure thing that if somebody had gone in there potentially after it was already late at night?
Just a procedure. Yeah, and in the process of them opening valves and getting things back into system, someone should have opened the door, walked in and made sure that there was water in those valves.
Yeah. The, the only thing that I, I'd recommend is. You know, man, or the pump three in the, in the pump house was leaking profusely. We need to make sure that our backups are working.
Yes.
And if they're broken, then you need to replace them.
Yes.
Hmm.
Fixed.
That one is, yeah, you can repair it right now.
As far as a, a maintenance on them, yes, there should be a maintenance schedule instituted, um, that kind of fell through the cracks.
Okay.
And that pump should have been repaired a long time ago, when they first found out that it was, uh, leaking, it should have been repaired.
So what's it cost for all of this?
Uh, I don't know yet, I haven't seen any voices come through for the rebuild of the pumps or anything yet, so I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm.
Is there just one place in Little Falls that does that?
I think there's a few places, um, most of the places that he talked to trying to get replacement pumps and rebuilds on them were two or three weeks out. These guys managed to get him in same day, basically, so he managed to get them over there and get them rebuilt quickly, so, um, they just happened to be here.
Holiday weekend.
So in my, in my own life, when we had occurrence like this, we wrote a UO, a annual occurrence report, described it and your action items were identified and then they were tracked, make sure they got done, are all these action items in Willie's head, or are they written down someplace now that, that the mayor were tracking, make sure they all get done, or do we, do we need to have a tracking system for the corrective actions?
I don't know.
I'm just.
I, I.
It's, those, those kinds of reports are as useful as who's gonna be looking at them and who's, who's gonna be monitoring.
I'm just saying, if they, uh, if, if not to report too much, is that the action items get done.
Procedure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that's what I'm.
And that's, that's, that's Willie.
That's very incidences like this.
Okay, but they're in his hand, isn't it?
Yeah.
Are they on a schedule like, I mean, and this is my question, cause of, you know, the fire hydrants are on a schedule, they do so many every year, so every year we know that those hydrants are.
They should be.
And everything is put in the GPS system, so I can go check it, or you can go check it, or you can go check it.
Yeah, they should be.
Is that something that we, that should be added to that?
Yeah, those pumps, um, honestly, any, any off mechanical function of this system should be on a maintenance schedule.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
The ARVs, the PRVs already, they check them weekly, um, but these pumps, wells, everything should be on some kind of maintenance.
Okay.
And, and the.
No, I don't think they.
And the electric motors as well.
In my experience, a vi- a cavitated pump is vibrating like crazy, and you're saying there's nothing that will detect vibration that could shut it down?
I don't.
I know there is.
I don't know, I've never, in my, in my experience in, as a water operator, I've never known of anything like that by, I don't know, maybe there is now, but in.
We've had vibration, vibrometers on every fan that we've ever had.
Cause I've been around a cavitating pump and you absolutely know it's cavitating.
And critical pumps. Damn right. And it's tearing itself up, and if you had a vi- vibration knockdown, it would shut it down.
They could have, they, all it would have taken is somebody walking inside that building.
Well, I understand that, but you don't always have people there.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, this, can we, can I ask why did the well get repl- pump get replaced?
Uh, I believe it was what happened, uh, our, somebody noticed that the, I don't know, who would I was, something to do with the motor, that the, uh, the output or something on the motor didn't seem quite right, and so when they pulled it up, they found out that the, not only did the motor fail, but the, uh, the well, the pump itself failed.
That was just updated.
Two thousand and eleven.
The VFD, no, 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 so the, so there's two different components here that we're talking about, the VFD, which is the variable frequency drive, is what tells that thing to turn on and turn off and how fast to go.
Mm-hmm.
What failed was the actual motor on the well itself and the pump that's down the pipe in the well.
Okay.
So we did replace the VFD not that long ago, but not the motor and the pump.
Right. Yeah, and I thought Willie told me that motor and pump was on two thousand and eleven, but I don't, yeah.
So the. So on this well, the motor's on top and it's got a shaft, goes all the way to the bottom, and the pump's on the bottom?
Yep.
It's, it's not a submersible.
It is a submersible pump, not, not a submersible motor, but a submersible pump.
The pump's on the. Okay. All right, and the third question I've got is, uh. Association. Uh, had three or four events where, uh, they had pressures and they, uh, water heaters and stuff got hurt and they caused a leak over here. And the question is, did, did anything happen that, that we did to cause those, those, uh, those incidents on their end or whatever?
No.
No, not that I.
Could we have the water hammer down here at the bottom, so I should put a fire hydrant closed and cause some pressures or cause stuff?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Not to mention every single meter pit that we have that hooks up to a service has a pressure regulator in it.
Okay.
That would stop the water hammer or any pressure surge.
Yeah.
Well, I've heard these issues, and so I, I said early, describe what happened, is, you know, they give us reports, we know at least, uh, we got some communication going between, like, what I've heard is what they, they told me and.
I know Lower Valley Energy had a big power pump, or a bump.
Yeah, power surge.
One day last week.
There were two of them last week.
That caused some problems in some homes, older homes, but I don't, that's the only thing that I've heard. Okay.
Kirsten, can you let me know what you get to know for that, cause that's, that's not gonna be budgeted next year, it's operating.
Yeah, the well was budgeted.
Yeah, that one was not, that was forty-three thousand, forty-six, forty-six thousand for that.
So at the same time, we're not taking in extra rate revenue that was budgeted, we've got all these other hits for repair costs.
Yep. Yep, and then I think the others were like three grand to have those rebuilt, but I don't know for sure.
We did have, we did have a little bit of a cushion in some of the repairs, um, which, um, we've kind of left in there, but not quite that large.
It's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Well, I have another question.
And that was a lot.
Another question for Ryan, uh, yesterday in the water board, maybe that didn't happen. Uh, two people from the association came and they want to put, replace some lines on Green Canyon Road.
Yeah.
Have you heard about this?
Yeah.
I've heard.
And they want somehow to see if they can, they'll, they'll provide the money if we can have our, you know, do a scope change to our contractor to do their stuff in the road at the same times, do not dig that road three times. What's, is, is, I'm not sure if, what's the process, if, if they come, here's my scope, can we add it? Is there, is there a way we can, uh, look at it?
No, because of, because we're dealing with this, this ARPA fund and, and we're dealing with our certain reserves.
No.
I mean, they, they could approach our, the contractor to do that work, but it's going to have to be a separate contract with that contract.
Okay. Okay, that's what I said, but, do we know what the schedule is for Green Canyon that pipe or?
As soon as the snow is ready and.
Yeah, we haven't even awarded it yet, so.
The snow's gone, then, then.
Next spring, so.
Yeah.
They don't wanna do it during summertime because they wanna use that line.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but now we're, if they do it separately, then we got, we're digging that street out twice or whatever. And we're trying to figure out how not to dig it up twice and affect the citizens, so I don't know if there's a way to have them break their scope to you and
No.
and have you figure out, is it doable, it's a doable or not, or they need to go to a bail, is there's a bail gonna be there?
Yeah, the, that's, that's the, they'd need to ask a bail if they can do that, um, as the town's concerned, town's project needs to come from.
Okay. Oh, I, I agree with that, I didn't know if it was a third name.
Because it's, it's the timed funding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want any perception of co-mingling anything.
Right.
Yeah.
There were.
You know?
But we, this, this has happened at times before with some power lines and stuff.
Right. Mm-hmm.
And, and the issue we run into with is who's in charge of what?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I mean, at, at, at a certain point, or you know, our inspector here, Ernie, what is he, his involvement with that portion of that project, and are we, are we following town standards? Who's, who's he working for at that point?
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm not fond of that, that's my vote.
The, the thing that, that kind of was a struggle with, with the power and phone companies is, and they understand they wanna get their, their conduits in there, but every proposal they've had is having it a foot off the, off of the trench, that's no go.
Mm-hmm.
I, I said here, eight feet off of our water line, you can do that, it's just not cost effective for them, they can go through there with their, their trencher. But everything that is outside of that trench has to be a separate contract that, from what, what the town's is.
So one thing I would ask is, you were saying, um, well, obviously the town has to go first, but would they then tear up our road and would it be better if we went after they did put over there, do?
Yes.
Yes.
Or does that matter? I mean, I would think.
Yeah, but they, they still have to have an excavation permit.
Yes, but, but, I mean, it's, they need to have an excavation permit and.
Yep.
What, whether that happens at the same time or two different times, it's gravel road, they need to follow the town's standards for, for trench, for their trencher road repair.
Mm-hmm.
So, whether it happens once or twice, it doesn't really matter on the town's concern, other than access to Green Canyon trails.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I, I told them to bring a written scope, what they want to do, you know, I, I knew it'd be, I knew it'd be a, a scope change to that, that, that contract, but it, it needs to be separate. Then we have to go to bail, not to our, not, not we, what our schedule is.
No.
The, the only, the only involvement that's my end and from the town's end needs to be a review of their plan, through the expiration permit and, um.
Inspection.
An inspection of, of the road repair.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so I really.
Could I make a comment, just a question? The last time that we were up on that road, there were honestly, there were four pipe, five pipes up there, remember? Six pipes rather, and we were trying to find which one was ours? And one of the old ones that was not being used was still full of water, and so we thought it was active. I mean, is there any advantage of tearing that road totally up and taking all that junk out and putting in nice lines?
That's.
Which probably was.
So, so the issue with that a little bit is, we have three lines through that road, there's, so there's actually five lines. So, there, there's nothing in there right now that's not active.
Oh, okay.
So, there's three lines that are ours, two of them from like, where the tank comes down there, two of them turn at Star Peaks and head south. One keeps going down, there's a Lower Valley line and a Stewart line, both go through there. Um, part of that initial phase is going to be some exploratory to find where we are. But we're planning on doing temporary water for that first stretch from, from the tank essentially down to this east. And replacing the line that we have in, in the same trench with a new line, so that we know where we're going, we're not going to hit anything else. Because the odds of getting Stewarts to come fix their line is slim to none.
That's a mess.
Swimmin' in.
Swimmin' in.
I've been told that the Stewarts are, have met with the association and have made that agreement that they would do, but.
Yeah.
But, but you've heard that.
Right.
Yeah, they've told me that numerous times.
So, do you know, do you know where the lines are in the road?
Having a vague idea.
There's a difference between where they're supposed to be and where they are.
I know where the leak was, like, where that was.
Yep.
They're in the road. I know that Stewart line, which, which is actually the association's line, it's called, it's called Stewart.
Yeah.
It's no longer the Stewart line, it's, it's association's water line.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I know that's no longer the side road.
Do we have that to town business?
Yeah.
All right, um, anything else, Ryan?
Nope, um, so, kind of my recommendation, if you guys are good with it, is to award the road project and the water project and hold off on the land plan project.
Okay, and I think we're good with that, so we'll do, we already have the road one on the, on the agenda, we can get the, uh, water one on?
We're not bidding on Mill Branch.
I'm looking at you, yes, we have to, we can't wait until tomorrow, quick motion.
Yes, the road.
Quick motion.
Yeah, I mean, the water one's not as big of a rush, but the road one needs to.
We need a motion to award, but for those.
Yeah, the one, yeah, yeah, both of them, no, at the council, or, uh, tonight, tonight.
Here or in town or?
We'll do it tonight, okay.
So.
So, I, I guess I'll be sending out another book?
Thank you.
I was trying to, but you sent out like three.
Oh, yeah.
One final question, and I know we covered this before, so, that sort of November date, we were saying we were going to try to have the Screen Canyon project done, liner project. That's really not, like, in a, the EPA has not said you must do it by November, it was more, we said we would try to do it.
We said we were, that's what we were aiming for, was to have it done by November, they latched onto that and said, okay, you're going to have it done by November.
But they haven't.
They have that in our documentation as the deadline.
Mm-hmm, okay, but they did not provide that to us and.
Yeah.
No.
As, my experience working with EA, EPA, as long as you're coordinating with them and letting them know what's going on, fine.
Keeping up the loop, they're, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we'll ask for delays, see what happens.
It's. It's the, and, I mean, we've got valid reasons to ask for delays, but it's not going to be anything.
We, okay, okay, okay.
As far as Mill Branch, just waiting on some hydraulic modeling, uh, we've got to make sure our freeboard meets the one foot.
Did we get the permitting, is that done through the Corps of Engineers, that's part of it, okay.
That's almost, almost, sorry. Okay.
I don't know, you should be modeling a hundred year flat or what do you?
Uh-huh, so, we're, we're trying to make sure that our channel, we're, we're looking at two different, um, bottoms on the culvert. Make sure our channel and our, our, kind of our culvert width will handle that freeboard to get the, our minimum freeboard level. That's just the top of the, inside of the culvert to the water, water. Just kind of waiting on that, it's like, just like five different.
I know.
Us, groups working on it, so.
All right, now, it looks like we probably won't do that work until next fall.
So.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, uh, just a, a couple of other things, um, I have several other things, but, um, Rue had sent out an email about, she wanted more information on the citations. And, um, she got a little pushback, but that, that won't happen again. So, um, anyway, I'm just kind of curious as to, does everyone else want the detail on the citations, like, what it was for? Who was it to, what, what the bond amount was, or is that something everyone wants?
Yeah, I know.
Because we can, we'll probably have to have Gina put that report together, but, I mean, she kind of does one on court anyway, but not if everything goes to court, so.
I just. Right, exactly, so, I just thought it would be useful to know, like.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
The types of things that people are getting cited for, and then are there, like, sort of habitual problems?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I, when I saw twenty-two citations, I'm like, dang, that was a lot, usually it's like onesie twosies, maybe he was just getting back in the groove, whatever they want, you know?
He's a lot, I know, I thought that was true.
Yeah. A lot of buildings, yeah, well, that could be, a lot of buildings, but, but, yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
And then I am also interested in the short terminal part, obviously, because we've had so many people ask, and I had people following up with me asking, you know, did anything happen with this?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, you know, would be very interested to just have a summary, it doesn't have to be anything expansive, just what it was, how much it was, and maybe the address, or it doesn't even have the person's name.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you guys are have access, you have access, you can have whatever you want, so.
Yeah, just big detail, you know, yeah. Yes, okay, thank you.
It's like social security numbers, and I don't think you really want those, so.
No, 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 just, just basic, yeah.
Just say, all right, um, I'll have a work on for report, and, uh, if, we can get that to you, so that's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, I had a couple of updates on a couple of properties that we've kind of talked about, Fifty White Pine, which is the, the, the pole barn with the thirty feet of fill.
Yes.
Um, right now, uh. Based on all of the information that Gina has put, put together for me, and that has, is now at the attorney's office, she wrote the letter, he's going to send the letter out. Um, they're probably going to have to take everything out, they didn't follow their own plans, the plans have been approved, so, it's, uh, it's a mess. And I think that's kind of where we're at with it, so, I just wanted to let you know.
It's an understatement that it's a mess.
Yeah.
They said, uh, take everything out, like.
All the fill.
And will they tear down the building and all that, okay.
They'll have to. They'll have to, they didn't follow their engineering plan to begin with, and so that's a pretty easy, with everything else set aside, they didn't do what they said they were going to do.
And do they have a? Oh, that's, yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, we'll kind of, I'll let you know, I'll keep you kind of updated on that one. And the other one is on, um, Sugarloaf, so, um, you brought this one to my attention. Um, there is a, a, a pole barn up there, they, and I think I sent, didn't I send that letter out to everybody, so you kind of know what's going on?
Yeah. I've seen pictures, but.
Yeah, I see the pictures and I emailed the letter, um, the biggest issue with that is their, their, um, permit doesn't expire until twenty twenty-five, and I know that people want it done immediately. Um, it, it doesn't, you know, and then the building inspector has been out there a few times, he has to move the drain, there's no doubt, it's, it wasn't built the right way, so he's got to move the drain. Um, evidently his back property markers are now missing, so we can't really tell if it's on, how close it is to the easement, so. Gina told the owner that they had to get those back up, I guess, according to mine, they had those up when the, when the building was approved, but I don't know what happened to those, so. So, they've got to deal with that, but we're trying to deal through that with the building inspector, who has already told them what they need to do. Um, yeah, the challenge, I know they want it fixed today, but that's just not, not the way.
It looked like they're trying to drain their lot onto the neighbor's yard.
No, it's the drain that goes out of the garage, so, yeah, it's the drain that goes out of the garage.
Yeah. You know, you know what they're going to do it for, really, but.
So, what they should have done is they should have built a catch basin, basically a, a French drain.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it should go into that, and they, they, they haven't done that yet, so, but they will do that, and they can't use that garage until it's done, so.
Yeah.
So, that's. So, so the intent was that they got a low spot in the, in the garage, and they got a drain there, and they're going.
Correct, which is what you do.
And they're going to pipe it out and dump it on their yard someplace.
Well, they dump it out, what you do is you, for a garage drain, yeah, you dump, you dump it in and you build a, like a French drain, or you can have some kind of catch basin for the water to go to.
Right. Yeah, the underground French drain, and this was an above ground.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's above ground and it shoots off to the neighbor's house.
Looks like it was going into the neighbor's house, their yard.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they need to fix it, the neighbor was also concerned about the fill after her initial concerns, but they're fine. So, they're fine on that, but we'll send a, I'm going to have Gina put together just an official letter to send them, rather than having, you know, ten people send letters.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
So, I just want to keep that one up and up, so that's kind of what was going on with that one, you had a question, because I know they've come to you.
Well, I did, I, yeah, I haven't talked to him for a while, but I was concerned, like, this is more for me than, um, like. The inspector told them they had to move it.
Mm-hmm.
But do we, are we not allowed to put a timeline on anything like that? Okay. So, even though they're doing something that isn't in their plans, they're allowed a whole year to do it, basically.
Has to be done. Not necessarily till or maybe.
Till the permit expires.
Yeah, or, sorry, for till next year, but they have it.
Yeah, but they can't use the garage until it's, until that it's done.
So, nothing is, because I know they've been parking in it already.
They're also missing of, an inspection evidently, so, there's a couple of, there's some other issues with that, but.
Okay, well, are we fining them for, for signing them for that? I think part of the problem is, like, when we're having a problem with inspections and such, that, like, the follow-up should maybe be quicker so that nobody's impacted. Because I know they are parking in the garage and using it.
They are using, okay.
So, I, I mean, at what point do we?
Are they using it for residential uses, or using it for construction? Are they living in the property?
No, I think it's a part-time person.
It's a new house, I mean, it's an old house, new garage.
The contractor, is the contractor parking it?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
The, the only owner is parking it.
Yeah, it's a garage, just a garage.
Yeah, they've been using it.
But you shouldn't be able to use it at all.
I know, well, they, but they are, so that's part of the problem, and, so I just didn't know if, like, for future, if there's something.
Yeah. Okay. Mm-hmm.
Because I can understand the concern, like, if my neighbor was doing that, I would be concerned for sure, so, I just didn't know if there's some way we can start putting.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, thirty days on, like, if they're cited for something, like, you have this long to actually fix it and different things like that.
Well, they haven't been cited, this was just a part of the building process.
Okay, although they should have been cited if they missed an inspection, right, like, they should, don't we have?
So that. The.
Well, no, I, I don't know, they've only had one inspection, and that was their footing and foundation is all.
If, if you miss an inspection, you can't get the next one completed until the previous one is done.
Yeah.
And where it gets kind of fun is, let's say that you put your drywall up before you've had your insulation inspected.
Mm-hmm.
Your building inspector can make you tear down the drywall.
Yeah, and we've done that before with people.
Yeah, because they're not allowed to conceal the boards and stuff, well, and I guess that's the other thing with this pipe, they're already putting dirt over it, so it's like, is that what they're doing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Almost, is what it.
Well, they've, but they've been told to fix it.
Okay.
I guess the problem is, is, is how do you manage, you know, fifty properties that are being built?
Yeah.
We just can't make sure everyone, she has a, once the inspection's done, it goes into I-works, and she checks everything off, so, when there's something missing, then, then she'll find them.
Okay.
But a.
Or, or she won't let them go forward, so.
Will branch drain be an inspecting, a practical item?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, that's in plumbing code.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Before you bury.
Yeah, so when you build a garage, you're supposed to have a drain, if you live in a city, it goes into your storm sewer. If you live here, then you have to build a, basically a catch basin of some sort.
Is it where he isn't, um, able to inspect the fifty homes or however many we have?
Yeah.
Is that why we're having some of these other issues?
No, it's because people will do what they want.
Okay.
No, that's not the case, it's, it's, what I'm saying is that if they, it's difficult to manage that many properties.
No, I hear you, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and you can't, um, you know, we give people, we want them to fix the problem, that's what we want them to do.
Sure. Yeah.
And so.
We just can't put a timing on it, really, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be tough to put a time.
It would.
Of thirty days, if you, if you found a violation, you got thirty days to fix it.
Mm-hmm.
That would be tough to do, because some of them might fix it in ten, ten, fifteen minutes, and some of them may take me six months.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, so it, it's a little different with, but I understand their frustration, we'll stay on top of it, but, but, we'll get it fixed.
Okay.
The concrete has not been poured into garage yet? Or hasn't?
No, it's in, has to be in, it's got a drain, right?
No, there isn't concrete in there.
Oh, so they've just done the roughing, they've just done the, the plumbing.
It's just a dirt floor?
Yeah, but it, I mean, it looks like it was leveled, they intend to concrete it, is what the.
The, the pipe, the pipe was put in and.
Person calls it, and I think that's why they were concerned about, like, the rush of it all, because, like, they were told they were going to start concreting, and then now this issue.
You do that. Yeah.
So, they're like, we don't want them putting concrete over it before it's fixed.
Well, they're not going to put concrete in the, in the.
Concrete in the garage will not impact further than the drain goes.
Yeah, that won't impact that drain system, because it goes it down and then over, so it, they'll still have to fix it.
Yeah.
It sure goes up for a.
I think they were meaning outside too, they were putting a pad or something, and I was like, well, that doesn't seem like it would be ten feet off.
Oh. Yeah, that would be an issue, if they did that, but I don't think that's on their plans, and I haven't looked at it lately, so.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah. Okay.
Well, we'll, yeah, we need to stay on top of that, so Gina's right now dealing with that one.
Okay, awesome.
She does a really good job of just calling the homeowner and say, you need to get this done, and they do, they're mostly the time that responds to.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, not always, as you can imagine, I kind of wanted to schedule another workshop in, in September, if we can, if you guys can do that.
Not next week, week after, I'll, I'm leaving now, what's the fifteenth, is, uh, Friday?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll be back the following, it's the twenty-second or something, so.
I will not be here the twenty-sixth through, but, um, that doesn't mean that one of the other clerks couldn't volunteer to do minutes.
That's true.
Um, actually, no, one of them couldn't, because she's coming with me.
Uh, webcam, why I make association municipal clerks and tribes?
Yes. Clerks and treasurers. Yeah, and this conference actually looks like it's got some really good stuff at it, so.
Good.
Where is it?
It's in me Casper.
In Casper. When these things come up, if anybody wants to go, if anybody wants to go to Wars, which is.
April usually?
April, it's a good one to go to, I went to that, they do, uh, a session on, on rate setting.
That's the. The water, um, that's the.
That is good.
And that's a water one, that, that one's really interesting, so.
Water. Usually, uh, mid to end April.
Oh, okay.
And that's in Casper usually.
That's usually in Casper, and you can go for a day or the whole, you know, that's up to you.
Usually they have the agenda about what they're going to have the classes on out by, like, February or March, so you can kind of make a plan and go there.
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay.
But that's water, yeah, but that's a good one. When are you back, Ron? You're going to be gone too?
I'm gone just for the week, this Friday to next Saturday.
What about the twenty-fifth, it's a Monday.
There will not be crafty arrival falls on that Monday.
Okay, Monday's your top three, you're running. January first.
Tuesday is okay.
Two, okay. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm good all week, so.
So, what, what day I'll be in Connecticut?
Next week sometime, is that what we're looking at?
No, we, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight that week.
Oh, okay.
Twenty, twenty-fifth is out.
Um, yeah, it doesn't matter to me, but.
I could do Tuesday or Thursday, Thursday would probably.
Thurs, the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, is that okay?
It's okay with me.
And then if, we do that, can we do it a little earlier?
It's, I'm, whatever you guys want to do.
Oh.
I'm here at nine usually.
So, you're saying Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
It's not up to me, I'm not going to be here.
Oh, that's right, tell me.
Oh, that's right, you're not here.
No.
Oh, the twenty-eighth is a Thursday.
Is that a tape?
That's fine.
Okay.
Oh, we won't have anybody to take notes, so, we'll just have.
Jamie, Jamie will be here.
Yeah, but who's going to run the front?
Sure.
I can take notes if I'm here.
Okay, we can record it too, we can, we can record it also, we record them anyway, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so September twenty-eighth?
What time?
What time, ma'am?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Ten o'clock.
The, the working people, huh?
Yeah, ten's, yeah, ten's great, if, or what time works for you, Rook, because.
Oh, yeah, the working people.
Let's make it done by two thirty, it's okay. I can make it work, I'm just telling you, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
We need it ten AM, done.
Done, 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 thank you.
Okay, it's on the calendar.
Uh, just a quick note, on the, um, snow blower, I sent out some information on that, where it's now sixty-seven thousand dollars. The brand of the one we have now, they're no longer making that, that model, so, um, the, the other one is called a Snow Wolf.
Yeah, and.
Sixty-seven thousand.
Too many repair problems with it.
Yeah, too many problems with it, I've never called them now, so, that's a mess, but, we didn't really budget it anyway, we all said, yeah, we want another one, and we didn't put it in the budget, but now it's. You know, twenty thousand more than what we talked about, so, um.
Do we get the, uh, the old one fixed, or the one with?
Yes.
The old one, I believe is fixed.
Yeah, it is fixed. Yep, so, that's kind of where we're at with it. I'm inclined to not get it this year, and wait till next year.
Not quick, it's on the calendar already. If I don't, I'll forget, so.
Yeah, I'm the same way, but. That's my thoughts on it, so, can think about that.
Yeah, I, um.
And we'll, we can meet again.
There's, there's a related question.
I think Willie was kind of fine hanging on until we could budget for better, instead of trying to squeeze it in right now.
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Related question, are we going to have enough personnel to, to operate it if needed?
I'm sure trying.
We did hire a new person, we started last week.
Yeah, we hired somebody, yeah, Jer, was it Jared?
My name is.
Yeah.
Jesse.
Jesse, I interviewed him probably six months ago and tried to get him to come for work for us, and he's finally decided to, so.
His, his skills, he can run everything and everything, nope.
Not everything, no, we had, we wanted more of a labor.
Yeah, his previous life, he was kind of a mechanic, but he, um, which is pretty funny.
He can fix everything we have.
Uh, he's not necessarily nuanced in being able to run equipment, but he can run equipment.
Yeah.
Uh, Willie's had him, um, run a loader to load trucks, and he says he's doing fantastic.
Yeah, he's good.
Where does he come from?
Uh, Nafton, well, thank you, Willie's.
Well, he's so straight up, yeah, he came from the mine, not this mine, but the, the other mine, striving to Montpelier with him?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I've been trying a while to get him.
How'd you, how'd you convince him to come in?
Um, I don't know.
Redding might come here, it's every day.
Combination of timing on his part with us.
It, it, it was really timing more than anything, I mean, um.
He wanted to originally, back when we tried to offer him the job, but he couldn't financially swing it at the time, um, and so he's in a, just in a better place now, and he can, so.
Okay, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, we, we still need two more?
Um, I think three more.
Mm-hmm, and so, mm-hmm, oh, yeah, this was just.
Well. All the operators are supposed to operate, we got, we got all the water people.
Is Zach still on medical leave?
Yeah, he'll be back the tenth, on light duty.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we're covered in the water department, it's just public works.
Yeah, so.
It's pub, it's, uh, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, water, we're fine. We're fine, we're fine, um, and, and speaking of water, they're now taking a class on pumps.
I did see the register.
Signed up for that yesterday, so that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Tiny.
Uh, I don't know, I saw that he paid for it, that's all I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
How many people are?
Uh, the, Willie and the two water operators.
Um.
Are doing pumps, mm-hmm, learning pumps.
You three of them.
How long is the class?
So, not, it, it is an online class.
Oh, really?
Most of it is, so, and there's some practical, but, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we have the information, if you want to learn starts, I'm.
I might actually, I was.
You're going to take the class?
I'm thinking about it.
So, that was my recommendation.
Willie on the Zoom.
Oh, well, thank you.
Is that Willie Steve and Jake?
You don't want to play with pumps that big.
No, well, then the crazy thing is, we were trying to find a pump to borrow, and everything was too big, so, even though those are really big, evidently they're not very big, I don't know.
Oh, I don't want my.
I just don't know. So, anyway, the last thing I had on my list is the water board meeting yesterday, uh, got a little out of hand, in my opinion.
Yeah, it did.
And just so, um, both Rue and I were kind of listening on the Zoom, just to see what they were doing, as far, as far as talking about rates and, and, um. So, there's a couple of concerns, but one of them is the chairman resigned as the chairman. Um, he does want to stay on the board, but he doesn't have time with his job, and he's not here very often, so I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that.
So, Frank is, he resigned as the chair, you still want to be on the board?
He's still on the board, he just doesn't want to be the chairman anymore. I mean, and then the other concern I have was, Ron, was you.
Yes, I got mad at Chris.
And. You did, you told him to shut up, which is pretty unprofessional for a councilman, and you, you represent this group, and I think my bigger concern is, as a liaison.
Yeah.
It's not your job to run a meeting, it's not your job to tell them what's on the agenda, it's your job to communicate back and forth with them and with the council. And so, I'm pretty concerned, I mean, I have to be honest, I'm really concerned about.
Was it, uh.
I don't know, I was very unhappy with him. I mean, he he was not uh contributing to the well-being of the meeting. Uh um I was trying to explain what the town was had had discussed and uh he wouldn't listen, so that's why I got mad.
Cause he's a board member and and you're not, so that that's obviously another concern. Um where are you leading for Arizona soon?
Yeah. Uh, mid-October.
Are you? Okay. I think um since while you're gone, I'm gonna take over as liaison for that board.
Okay, you can take over now if you want.
Okay, okay. And it's a big step for me to take that board, but um for now, double up.
Right. It's it's very dysfunctional, yeah.
So um yeah, I can work, I can work through that. The other first thing they're gonna have to do is figure out the chairman.
Hmm.
So and that's uh, you know, that'll be interesting, so. So there you go. So that was, that's the end of my list. You all have a list. Taylor, go ahead, go first.
On, I heard you say earlier and I saw the dollar sign on the spare pump for Green Canyon.
Uh huh.
That's just pump. I I'm gonna advocate that we need both the motor and the pump.
Okay, and I'm not sure what they're what they're talking about, but.
Up at Green Canyon?
Yeah, just an extra.
That way you can look the one out and drop the other one in because motors will burn out as well as pumps.
Yeah, that's what happens.
Well, and those motors have been in there since two thousand eleven. There's it's, I mean, knock on wood, it's it's a miracle that they have annoying as well as they have.
Eleven, yep.
Yeah, I think it's the whole thing. So you can take one out and put it in, but I'll let you check.
Nah, it's cause he's he's quoted ten thousand for the pump.
I don't, I think he did um he did talk to them about like a s- a full setup.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Okay, yeah, that's kinda what I thought, but I'll I'll have him deal with this on the price. We need to know what the prices are on this stuff anyways.
When they have a mo- or we have three pumps, but do they have three motors in or just the one?
Yes, so it's a, so what happens is it's pipes coming in and then the pump itself sits on the bottom and it's just basically like, kind of like a toilet bowl is what it looks like, but
Each motor.
um and the water goes in and everything, but the there's a a shaft that comes down from the motor that sits on top and the shaft is what turns the impeller inside the pump and it pulls the water.
Okay, so I'll get the prices.
Yeah, yeah, and where it's, if it's like a little pump and a little motor, it's not that big of a deal, but these are like six inch pumps.
Have you not been in the, we need a water, you need a water tour.
You need to go up there.
That uh, come grab me someday. I'll get a set of keys and we'll go drive.
I do need that. Okay. Yeah, go look at it. It's pretty crazy.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see it.
Yeah.
Now that that pump is on, yeah.
If you're gonna do a water tour, I'd like to do it.
Okay.
Sure.
You can do that.
They might uh catch up later.
You can do it like.
It's worth it.
Grab, well, we can grab Willie and set up a day and just uh just go around.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I know, what I was living in.
That'd be. It's pretty, you wanna do it?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Okay. We haven't done one for a while, so.
You just see inside of that that building. These things are, when I was.
Yeah, you really need to see it.
Our one's the same size.
So the three that are in Green Canyon, yes. As far as the wells, no. Um the one across the street is our largest well and it's uh six inch.
Who else? Marty, thank you.
Um, I think this one, they found out was a five inch and I think it's on the four inch as far as the wells are.
And those are the pumps that they have?
Yeah, you're probably right.
No, um, yes, sorry, yeah, as far as pumps.
Yeah, I was gonna say when in Florida with the swimming pool, I had three pumps running the pool, but there were always four because invariably one would burn out and you just
Uh huh.
but I slap the next one in and go down and get that one rebuilt.
You say six, five and four?
They they didn't go up. The other thing, there's a meeting on Thursday in Afton?
Yes. Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to let them know ahead of time if we're we're coming?
Did you?
Yes, yes, so so Justin did want an RSVP beforehand to say that if you are going to be there in physical person, you need to let him know.
Oh, oh. Oh, are you gonna send?
Okay.
Oh, do you wanna make account? Just send one email?
Okay, okay.
I said, I already told him that I would be there, but I didn't um.
Oh, yeah.
I s- I sent my email in.
I did not.
I missed it and it noticed somewhere. It had to be.
Are you gone?
Yeah.
It's debating it, but yeah.
Okay, so two.
So one question, Moon, it's it starts at five thirty, but is that when they're serving food? So.
It starts at five and then um I think they serve food beforehand, but.
Oh, okay, excuse me. I think four five or does the actual meeting start at five?
Before five or does the actual meeting start at five?
Yeah, the meeting starts at five.
The meeting starts at five, okay, yeah. I'm probably gonna do the hike, so.
Oh, at five, okay.
Do the hike.
Yeah, there's a hike up.
Yeah, so Violet sent out a separate email um inviting everybody to take a hike to the intermittent, to to take a hike, to take to go to the intermittent springs.
Oh.
To the intermittent springs and you meet at the uh Afton Community Center at three fifty? I think it's at.
I don't, I don't remember, but probably.
Okay, if you wanna hike.
Well, I can do, but I don't I don't think I can be there to do all of that.
I Mayor and I have done that hike repeatedly, so.
So uh so three? I mean, not sure.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure the hike, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna actually be able to make it. It's just I have to make a decision.
No, no, for five. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So two.
I might be able to, but.
I can do it. We'll report back and let you know how that goes.
The reels?
Well, and it is on Zoom.
There's seldom in the in close this close, so I was like, I could go in this one.
I know.
Yeah, usually.
So the reels at five are good for?
That's.
I I think it's a little bit before. Um I think he said in the email to show up a little bit beforehand.
I need to, oh, it's all with original invite.
I'm go- I'm gonna leave here at four thirty and that'll give me plenty of time to get over there, so.
And it's on Zoom, right? If I can't.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Oh, yeah, there was a Zoom link.
Yeah, if you can.
I can tell you my experiences, they're super hard to hear, but it's probably.
Yeah, I'd rather be there. I'll probably let me see what, so.
But yeah.
If they have it in the civics or in the um that civic center where the Cobb Museum is, that room is actually pretty good. It's it could be an echoey gym like it's usually in.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that, okay. Oh, that one, that camera one was terrible. Then they forgot about the Zoom people.
Yeah, so we're bruising hands and all.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll I better send that email when we get finished. All right, thank you for bringing that one up. Um any, who else? You got another one? You good?
Okay, so um I was just gonna update people on the housing situation, just like um also like K rates and stuff where we kinda stand.
Okay.
Um definitely housing is expensive. I was seeing stuff um in Afton is cheaper. You could get, you know, a one bedroom and it looked like a studio to me basically, but a one bedroom, one bath for like fifteen hundred dollars is the cheapest I saw anywhere in the valley. Um and then most of the housing was closer to like uh two thousand to three thousand range. So um I talked to Jackson, even though I know they're not really per se, but um they offer, I think it was three hundred and fifty dollars for housing at one point. And so then the, but they do the travel, um they do pay for people's travel time and and um and then also for gas. So they usually wind up paying out almost five hundred dollars for travel a month. So I didn't know if that would help us a lot if we could broaden our horizons further out and bring people in versus just trying to stay in the valley since we're having some issues that way. But um and I kinda sent the mayor some of my ideas, but um one was starting benefits
Thank you.
within thirty days versus ninety and I didn't know.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we could do that, the insurance will last.
Um currently sixty days is the standard as far as the insurance company. They won't let it go any out further out from that and they won't let go go any sooner than that, so it's sixty.
Oh, is it?
Is it sixty, okay.
They won't. So with us starting the new insurance though in December, I was wondering if we could ask them.
With Blue Cross? I don't know.
Yeah, cause I know a lot of companies have started doing that and and that's really beneficial for people that if they're changing jobs, they're, especially their family.
Uh huh.
No, it's they'll also find find COVID.
Yeah, um because COVID is so expensive, it's silly, so.
Uh huh.
I'll 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 call Blue Cross for it.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um and then, you know, I was looking up applications and different things that we had spoke about.
Uh huh.
And I feel like um part of our, it like I think we might need a little bit of a consulting within HR department. Cause I easily started going down the rabbit hole and got a little.
Geez, okay.
And it was overwhelming. Like, cause I feel like when we started probably as a town eighteen years ago, that it was
Uh huh.
so much smaller. There wasn't really a need, but now as we're growing and.
Uh huh. Okay, I wonder if Andrea would could help us with this. She's with the LGLP.
Possibly.
Yeah, and that's her background.
Okay, so that might be good to talk with her and just on the key points that we have mentioned in the past, like application and background checks and
Okay. Okay. Right, background checks.
all that and where it needs to be because looking over our um employee handbook, it definitely has a lot of holes in it that need to be.
Uh huh.
So I, and that was a whole other rabbit hole. I was like, oh my gosh, cause I was reading other people or like other companies and businesses.
Yeah.
And I think it's just with our growth that we're needing, yeah. And I I think just with our growth that it's just gotten kinda out of control.
Stay with government, yep.
Yeah, there's been additional issues crop up in the last eighteen years, so.
Oh, totally, yeah. But but as we're learning from them, how, where to add them and put them in and best steps that way. So I, if she could help, cause I'm assuming that it wouldn't be as expensive and
Yeah, oh, yeah. Uh huh. Okay, I'll I'll reach out, but.
and I don't mind kind of spearheading once we have that person, if it's her or whoever, but.
Uh huh. Yeah, I'll see what she's willing to do for us. It's kind of one of the things she does for her liability insurance.
Okay, um. Okay, yeah. Um and then also, I didn't know, we talked about where we were putting the um, not the application, sorry, the the job postings out.
Uh huh.
And so if we did decide to do something like travel and and housing, one or the other, not both, um but if we chose to do one or the other, um maybe posting it out further in other areas. I know Idaho like.
So we currently have it listed on Wyoming at Work, which is statewide, and um I've actually even seen a few from Idaho and other places, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We had one from Colorado that actually um applied, but.
Oh, did they? Okay.
Um it's um, so yeah, we've got a few of them. Unfortunately, what it seems to be happening with Wyoming at Work is the people that are applying for it, we try to contact them and they don't wanna get back to us.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's a situation of um whereas unemployment requires them to be actively searching for jobs and here's me applying for a job that I have no intention of submitting, so.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Right, yeah. Oh, I was sure that's part of it. Well, and if that's the case too, like um I'm I was also wondering on the job postings, like I haven't really seen the job posting like anywhere, but maybe it was online, like on Facebook or something.
I think currently it's on Facebook.
Yeah, it is on Facebook, yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay.
The mayor's got it going out into the newspaper as well.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, it's going to the newspaper, then it's starting the twentieth for three weeks. But we nearly need another operator now, so.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we need to put more information about our benefits and pay on there, um especially if we increase our pay, cause I feel like that might attract people.
Not just the labor. Yeah, cause this one doesn't have pay.
Yeah, it it.
Yeah, and I adjusted with the one Wyoming work, uh Wyoming at Work uh job posting has as far as the salary range to bump that up a little bit.
Okay.
Uh but that one's specifically looking for an operator, for an operator, so.
Okay. Okay. And they would get paid more anyway, probably then if they do experience.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I don't have pay on that app, I just do.
I think it might help um from other ones that I had looked at.
Okay. I can change that tomorrow.
I think the appeal is there if it's something like that, so.
Okay.
And it does already list our benefits.
Yeah, the benefits are on there.
It does, oh, okay, good deal. All right, and then um one thing with the water board, uh was hoping that we could get um
Yeah.
Uh huh.
like a supervisor, like one of the water supervisor guys to be there, I think would help the meetings. I know, they don't like to.
No, I think that uh. Does not help to.
But.
They they were attending for a while. Um I don't know why they stopped, honestly, but I I agree, I think at least uh a water operator or the public works director should be there.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be helpful. Um I was actually had that on my list too and then um I mean, I noticed there's on the calendar here, we still have the like the WIP twenty twenty one
Yeah. Okay.
Our construction.
project, right? Or is it gone? It's down now or not?
I just took, yeah, cause they're.
Cause I was thinking at some point it would be helpful for Ryan to go to one of them too to answer, you know, like that summary he just gave us and I know Marty, you were here
Yeah, he's like a biologist.
notes, but just for the whole water board to hear this summary of what happened. Uh I know we have to pay when Ryan, you know, is somewhere, but um.
But if we had him when he was in town, he's in town all the time, so.
Yes, yeah, so I just thought that would be useful as well and and certainly one of the water operators. I mean, it just, we're never gonna get past this if those guys don't get together.
Maybe, so. Uh huh. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and I think it's helpful to have somebody in the water department that can help offer insight, but also have a little bit of say in what's happening in their department.
Uh huh.
Yes.
So maybe we need to go back and read this, like the old water board that actually had some of these people as part of the board, so.
But I think it's still in the ordinance. It says public works director, doesn't it?
No, I think it does.
I don't believe it.
Does that in this one?
I don't remember now. Can we take that out?
So, good call.
We did just pass the thirteen of that.
Mm-huh.
All right, there rains tonight.
Yeah.
No, no, that's for different one.
No, I don't. That's a different one.
Um.
Yep.
And then.
Good shit there.
Um, I wanted to talk about that, so the paid invoice report that you had, it was very helpful.
Right.
Uh huh.
And I'm working, um in fact, I've I've missed the call with them to have Cassell see if I can set up to add, cause Dave brought up a good point on there that it has the G O code on there and I know what that means and Dave knows what that means, but you guys don't know what that means. So if I can add a column in there that literally just gives the title of what that account is, it will probably help a little bit as well, so.
Yeah.
I don't.
Most of them. But.
Okay. I know.
Okay, um but I did have a couple of questions about it. I um, one was, well, wasn't really a question, it was like, well, the life insurance so do we cha- pay? I noticed they were all different um payments, so I didn't know what that was.
It's divided out by percentage of um general roads. So general is like me and some of the office staff and how people are allocated, but it's uh it's admin, roads,
Okay.
um public safety, which is Jim, um P and Z and water.
Okay.
And so it's divvied out between those accounts.
Okay, so that's why it's all a little different, okay. And then um.
Yeah. And it's based on who actually has it, cause you'll, it's like the Delta Dental, um Jim doesn't have the Delta Dental, so public safety isn't charged for that.
Okay.
And so some of them are broken out a little bit different. Like um Jamie's not on most of it. She's on, I think she's on the life insurance and the short-term disability and that's it.
Okay.
Um and so it's kind of how.
But that's why there's so many too, okay. Um and then uh I had a question about the cell phones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um I just noticed like um one of the cell phone bills and I didn't know if this was every month, I didn't have time to go back and look, but it was like eleven hundred dollars for them.
And uh we bought somebody a tablet.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if it was a new phone.
Because because he needed a new tablet.
I was, I wondered.
Somebody, he does, uh yeah, he does a lot of work on his tablets, so.
Yeah.
Uh, no, that makes sense. I I assumed it was for a new phone or something, but it's just a test.
Yeah.
Well, no, I can't, I don't like.
No, it was like, it was just for a for a tablet, I'm sure.
Okay, and then um. No, and he does usually. I watched him do it the other day, so.
Oh, oh, really?
So, gotcha. Um and then my other one was um cleaning. It was expensive.
She is uh, what is it? She cleans every week and it's three hundred and twenty-five a week. She cleans this building, the public works building and the water office. Um and.
I guess she almost does as much as our mayor. So I was wondering.
Thank you.
I don't, not sure which problem was the problem.
I know. No, I just was kind of like, that's a bit excessive and I didn't see them.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's. I- is it once a month or once a week they're doing it?
Yeah, she, once a week.
Yeah.
So what's that, ten, ten hours?
The mail center needs to be done every day.
How much she charge, three bucks an hour or something?
Hmm, no, she just charges weekly, so it's.
Is this her usual job?
No, no.
Okay. But I think I might wanna look at something else at some point.
If you think about how many hours it's been.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, she cleans every.
The cleaning thing has been a roller coaster.
Yeah, it's, so but she cleans every.
Yeah, she actually shows up, which has been great.
Yeah, and she actually cleans what she's supposed to be cleaning, which is the other one too, but.
Yeah, which is another issue, so.
Um we didn't have any teeth before saying, will you get and clean this? Well, we don't have anything that says that she's supposed to clean it. So now we have an agreement in place. She's a bonded company. Um and it's, she has a list of things that she's, yes.
Well, so she does do this.
Yeah, she has a checklist.
Okay.
Yeah, um but she cleans every floor of this building, even the mail center. And she cleans um all of public works.
How much were we paying paying before?
Three twenty-five a week.
Okay.
Yeah, so she hasn't, I don't know how long she's been doing it. They got before.
Couple of years now.
Yeah, a couple of years now, yeah.
Yeah, so we haven't had an increase in that in probably five or six years, so.
And I also, okay.
I'll tell you, the public works, that that building gets pretty dirty.
It's disgusting.
Yes.
It's gonna scour it out every week, so.
Yeah. I would, I would say that she probably earns every penny of it.
I would agree.
Yeah, and the water office is probably just as bad too, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be too. Okay, that's that's it?
I, uh, oh, and then had any bids come in for the pally?
I have not received anything. Um we're not sure if it's gonna be a situation like we usually have with the other bids that they wait until last minute to bring it to us, so.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Um the, I think the pre-meeting is ne- this week.
Yep, it's on Thursday.
And we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea of what that's gonna look like then, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay, very good.
That was it?
I just, I have a few things, I'll make it quick. Um so yeah, the snow RFP pre-meeting is this Thursday at one o'clock. Um I'm gonna send
All right. Okay.
uh Kristen just like a little agenda and a couple documents. Um I talked to Will earlier, so he's gonna be there to answer questions.
Oh, good.
Okay.
We'll see what we uh, if anything, you know, and then also, cause Rue made a mistake in the uh request for proposal and said that bids were due by noon on the twenty ninth, which is a Friday.
Uh huh.
So I will be here ten o'clock, right? The door is open.
That's very nice, thank you for volunteering.
Waiting, waiting with paper. Um, okay, la da dum. So good to hear about the new hire, um cause I was gonna ask about road grading and you know, just how they were catching up after all the water stuff and how that was going. Uh talked about that. I did, I'm working on updates to the short-term rental ordinance. I really am
Yeah.
trying to get it ready so that we could potentially go to reading maybe next month unless you think the attorney needs to look at it first, but to get it done like over the winter.
Um. I'd send it out to the council.
Okay.
When we get around.
And then during that, Taylor provided me.
I still have his notes from the last one, so I can look at that.
Okay, yes. Taylor provided me a nice packet that I think had the one from, was it Steamboat Springs? Um and then some other ideas about um working on a short-term rental webpage, like some additions to our current information. Um working on a short-term rental webpage, like some additions to our current information we have on our town website, which I will get with Kristen at some point to to work on that. Um in my kinda hunting around for short-term rental ordinance information, the town of Fredericksburg, Texas had a lot of really interesting information.
I know, I've been there.
And they actually, there was a whole thing they just recently did, because they seem to be in exactly the same place we are, even though I guess they're a pretty, there's larger town. But they just did their ordinance in twenty twenty-two, they've been having all these issues, they just hired Granicus.
Excuse me, got the waters.
And. Tourist, yes, yes, and um but they just went through and completed a ninety-day short-term rental task force, they called it, and there's a.
Yes, yeah. Wow.
A briefing that's posted, that's the PowerPoint presentation that's on their website, and I'll send it to the council.
Okay, that'd be cool.
Because they put together a citizen panel to kinda look at things and make recommendations to the mayor and to the town council, and I was like.
That's a great idea.
With all the things that have happened here over the summer, maybe that's something we might look into doing and I'd be, you know, I'd be happy to kinda honcho it or whatever, but. I'll send it out to see what everyone thinks of that and maybe that's something else we could do that might have citizens go, okay, they are trying to do something.
Mhm. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Um and I think that as part of that, if we were to do something like that, make a panel or task force, that we should also have, you know, some people that are property owners, like Dave, Dave Hall, I think.
That would be great, yeah.
Would be a good one to have, Wayne, sorry, Wayne, not Dave, um Wayne Hall.
Wayne, Wayne Hall. Mhm.
But anyways, I'll send that out.
Yeah, Wayne's the least reasonable.
Yeah, yeah.
He he doesn't show up in the Harvard Law School sweatshirt and swear right.
No, I know, that hasn't been worn for twenty years, though, um.
The new big trail sign thing, I know.
It's up.
Is it up? Is it up?
Oh, my gosh, I do it right now.
Yeah, I can see it.
I installed it today.
I can see it, it's good, okay, cause I was gonna follow up on that, so you can tell how much I'm paying attention.
It's up.
Oh, was it just a salted?
Yeah, no, no, you're fine.
It's down there, right?
I thought that was a better idea, or that you, that's what you decided, it made total sense.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, it looks good. Yeah, cause, cause Craig and Will had looked and there was too much Verizon stuff over here and didn't wanna get into that, so.
Yes. Yeah, there was, a lot of fire.
I'm gonna drive down there just to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it's right on the pool house.
We were installing it at nine o'clock this morning.
To actually pay attention when I'm driving to work to that point.
Yeah, I thought the tiny pool house was a great idea.
Yeah. Two more quick things we had, at the last town council meeting, I think we had a resident that commented, they they asked if we could.
I saw that.
Yes.
Display the council package the way we used to, I know now we've sort of shortened it to like some summary PowerPoint slides, but there was a quest, request at the last council meeting. Can we still do the packet the way we used to, like going from page to page? I wrote that down as, on the, yeah, project it, so I don't know if that's that.
Up on the.
Oh. Yeah, we'd be glad to see about that thing. Maybe we could, should look out for the next meeting, but not tonight.
Yeah, not tonight, I know it's like kind of a last minute, but I do, I made a note about that, I meant to bring it up earlier, um.
Okay. Okay.
I could probably maybe do some kind of a hybrid. And still do the PowerPoint but have the council's book stuff.
So you could flip to it if needs be, okay.
In.
Okay.
That'd be awesome, um I, Mayor, I need to get the Tree City recertification package put together, we usually do that in October and it's gonna be October, so.
Oh, yeah.
Um and then the.
I just have to sign it.
Yes.
It's fine.
Um we also talked about, I know Ryan gave us a little update on the middle branch project.
Mhm.
There was some pre-work that might be able to get done though before the end of the calendar year, which I I heard about, something about taking a hydrant out and taking a tree down or something. And since that sounds like that work is not gonna get done till next summer or next fall, the way things are going.
Mhm. I think that's something they said they could do, what, pro-minimal amount of time.
I feel like it'd be sort of a, a good faith effort to show, okay, we're, we are getting ready, we're not gonna get this done, but you know, here we're we're.
Yeah.
We're doing this, cause you know it needs to be done and our guys would do it anyway.
Yeah, you might be able to get, uh somebody to come out and cut that tree.
Yeah, I would suggest uh as long as that tree is, that we.
But not moving the hydrant, doesn't make sense right now.
We have a tree service actually take that tree.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're not gonna do that, we don't have anyone.
Somebody mentioned, I would cut it down. I'm just not gonna do anything with it after.
And I think that is all.
That's like perfect, yeah, they could probably let me.
Oh, what?
Happy to go out there with a chainsaw, but.
At least start.
There were a couple of little tiny things, but I'm not gonna talk to you, I don't know if it was farmer's market related, they can let us know about it later, okay.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
I had so many great comments about the farmer's market this morning at.
Yeah.
Oh, goodness.
Good.
They really liked it and um hoped that there would be more variety next year, hopes that you do it next year.
Positive, positive.
Awesome.
You guys are.
Yeah.
Yes.
So um yeah, it was very positive, so it's so exciting, yeah.
That's great, good time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was funny, it was something.
Good. Yeah.
That was fun.
Might eventually have to get someone to help me.
It was a lot.
It was a lot, I mean, I mean, thank you really.
Ron, you're up, sorry, you're last.
I had a question for uh Kristen, uh first of all, that list of all the sort of people on uh water, water rate, the big water list, who do, who's on.
The report.
The report you did.
Mhm.
But does the town, is it using water, it's not supposed to? Like I couldn't tell at the want, the list of the, of the uh hybrids and stuff that the water, the town has, are are you, are we paying all of our bills, or are we, we just use all the water or pay for all the water we're using?
Yeah.
Cause I couldn't tell on there, if we, if we had, if we had meters that.
Yeah, how many meters do we have?
We have six accounts that we pay on.
We have six different accounts that we pay.
Okay, cool.
If it's got a meter and it belongs to us, we're, the only one that is um, I think it's listed under that report as commercial non-revenue, is we own the lot that the tank is sitting on. And it's um, it, there's no water to it, so it's listed as, it's got its own account, but it's not a revenue account, cause there's no, just nothing to charge.
Interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was some accounts there that we weren't paying or to tell.
No, no, we're paying all our bills.
Okay, there, that's a, that's a nice list.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah.
Oh, easy.
I can say, I see nothing from uh our national, our forestry guy on our Tree City.
Oh, yeah, on Tree, oh, yeah, I know.
I'm not sure where.
Or fireways.
Oh, fireways.
Fireways, yeah, yeah, fireways.
Yeah, we better, we probably. Okay, uh motion to recess.
Move recess until seven o'clock.
Second. But move to second and all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um, motion passes, thank you very much, you guys.